Thank you all for your patience. We're about to begin. Board members, come to the table. Again, I apologize for the delay. This February 18, 2016, regular meeting number 14 of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the London Town Elementary School Fifth and Sixth Grade Chorus under the direction of Mallory Cave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was lovely. Thank you so much. And thank you, parents, for sharing your talented children with us here tonight. Item 1.02, announcements. We have a few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. I will now call on Mr. Press for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board will be recognizing Read Across America Day on March 2. The National Education Association's Read Across America, now in its 19th year, is an annual reading motivation and awareness program that calls for every child in every community to celebrate reading on or around Dr. Seuss's birthday. This year's celebration is based on the themes "Oh, the Places You'll Go When You Read," to encourage students to delve into books, to learn as much as possible while becoming lifelong readers. In cities and towns across the nation, teachers, teenagers, librarians, politicians, actors, athletes, parents, grandparents, and others develop NEAs Read Across America activities to bring reading excitement to children of all ages. Governors, mayors, and other elected officials recognize the role reading plays in their communities with proclamations and floor statements. Athletes and actors issue reading challenges to young readers. Teachers and principals seem to be more than happy to dye their hair green or wear a Seuss-inspired costume if it boosts their students' reading. The Board will also be recognizing National Foreign Language Week on March 7 to the 13th. The week of March 7 to the 13th has been designated as National Foreign Language Week. The Alpha Mu Gamma Foreign Language Society has sponsored National Foreign Language Week since 1957, and the theme for 2016 is Languages Enrich Your Mind. Schools are encouraged to use this opportunity to highlight the value of learning world languages and learning about other cultures and to celebrate the successes of world language students and teachers. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize a number of scouts we have in the audience this evening who are working on their citizenship in the community and communication merit badges. If you're a scout and are joining us, say if you'd stand so we can recognize you. Thank you all very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Now, we're going to deviate just slightly from our agenda. I am going to call on Ms. Evans for a special resolution.
There are many people who work with us every day, and there are, in particular, three people who make us look good every day. Our Clerk of the Board, Eileen Mulberg, and our Deputy Clerks, Anne Benedicco and Bev Madeja. And so I want to thank you all for what you do for us every day. We know how hard you work, and even though you're not normally on the cameras here, we know you're there and we know you're supporting us every minute. So, thank you. Resolution on School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Whereas school board clerks in every locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of this school board, a record of all receipts and dispersments, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of his/her county or city as may be required by the school board, and whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings such as tonight, and whereas school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve at their highest potential, and whereas school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents, the VSBA Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas the Fairfax County School Board joins the VSBA in recognizing the many and varied contributions of school board clerks, now therefore be it resolved that at its meeting at the 18th day of February 2016, the Fairfax County School Board also recognizes the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And with great sincerity, I move this motion.
Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hand. Well, it's unanimous. Isn't that surprising? I mean, you know, we couldn't put this on the agenda because they make the agenda, so we just had to do this. So, we would love to have you come up front, and we have lovely certificates and flowers, and we'll take a picture, okay? Thank you. All right, item 1.03, Recognition of Social Work Month. I call on Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. I am very honored to read the recognition of National Social Work Month. March is National Social Work Month, and this year's theme is forging solutions out of challenges. Social workers tackle some of the toughest challenges facing our society. In every city and every community, they develop solutions to make mental health and healthcare more available, to reduce poverty, to eliminate injustice and discrimination, and to protect vulnerable children from harm. Social workers contribute at all levels of society, working with individuals, families, and schools, to mediate conflict, foster positive relationships, and create hope and opportunity for people in need. Social workers in Fairfax County Public Schools use their training, experience, and skills to provide services to children, families, and school staff members in the effort to remove personal and environmental obstacles to optimal student academic performance. Social workers are committed to helping every child achieve in school and become a self-sufficient, emotionally healthy, socially well-adjusted, productive member of society. And we are very honored, I believe, to have some of our very finest social workers here this evening. So, those who are here, that we are honoring you this evening, please come forward so that we can take a picture with you. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for joining us here tonight after your long day. We really appreciate having your company tonight and all that you do for our kids and in our schools. Item 1.04, Recognition of National Athletic Training Month. I call on Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. March is National Athletic Training Month, and this year's theme is A Safer Approach to Work, Life, and Sport. An appropriate slogan reflecting the important role certified athletic trainers employed by Fairfax County Public Schools play in keeping our students safe. Through educational programs for students, parents, and coaches, preseason sports screenings, and emergency planning, these nationally certified and state-licensed medical professionals are dedicated to promoting the health and safety of our student athletes before, during, and after practices and competitions. The athletic healthcare services provided by certified athletic trainers include the prevention, recognition, evaluation, treatment, and rehabilitation of athletic injuries and illness. FCPS continues to be recognized as a leader in adolescent injury epidemiology, research, and sports-related concussion management for high school athletes. Our athletic trainers work collaboratively with parents, school staff, and community medical providers to promote safe participation for over 23,000 student athletes each year. FCPS is nationally recognized as a leader among high school athletic training programs. All 25 FCPS high schools have been designated as first-team safe sports schools through the National Athletic Trainers Association, and our athletic trainers are recipients of numerous awards in the athletic training field. So, at this time, I would like to invite the athletic trainers in the audience to join us at the dais for a photo with the Board.
Thank you all for joining us very much tonight. Item 2.01, Citizen Participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. Tonight, six citizens have signed up to address the Board. First is Mr. Steven Greenberg, followed by Ms. Rebecca Golden.
Dr. Garza, Chairman Hines, esteemed school board members, the legendary Mr. Press. Steve Greenberg, I'm president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent outstanding educators in FCPS, those whose focus is on our students, educating, protecting, and caring for them daily. I'll be speaking tonight to Agenda Item 3.01, Student Success, 3.04, Primary Day, the upcoming Employee Engagement Survey, and to address a concern that your teachers have on the school board. In regards to providing for our student success, please know how excited FCFT members are to know that one of the desired outcomes of this strategic plan goal is for teachers, students, and parents to have access to contemporary and effective technology resources. We need to provide one-to-one instruction to our students. Dr. Garza, they need their own technology so that we, as teachers, can differentiate instruction and help them develop the skills they need to be successful adults in an age of technology. I know Dr. Garza and her staff are working on planning for this now. I was in a meeting today. FCFT also values a balanced assessment system. Stop testing so much. High-quality early education programs, we need more, and fluency in two or more languages can, you say, fully fund our schools now in several ways. You have a motion tonight to approve the proposed calendar change by creating a teacher and student holiday on March 1, 2016. FCFT supports this motion, as ever-changing as it has been, please laugh or cry, and appreciates that this action will not affect any other days in our calendar for this year. Although missing another day of instruction is not ideal, it will not result in additional days added to this year, and it will hopefully eliminate some stress from employees in regards to parking and crowds. The greatest news, everyone should now be able to vote on that day, especially our teachers and educators. I educate, encourage, excuse me, all employees to take the Employee Engagement Survey starting this February 22. To be clear, this superintendent should be commended for implementing this survey, which is a component of the strategic plan, as collaboratively and transparently as I have ever witnessed. You allowed your employees to all take the survey now. You let us help select the vendor to administer it, created the survey questions with us, and now we're promoting the project together. This process was perfect, in my opinion, and will produce meaningful feedback that employees, from employees, which will now allow us to make FCPS even a better place to work. Thank you to Dr. Ramey, Mr. Sills, Mr. Drager, Dr. Garza, Chairman Hines, all of Human Resources, everyone who's worked so hard on this. This is truly how you do transparent and collaborative work, and it's because we have a superintendent who values employees, listens, and improves things. Finally, I'm here tonight to advise this school board that your teachers have brought a serious concern to me in regards to transparency on this school board. Although I've spoken to both the Chair and Vice Chair about it, thank you, Ms. Hines and Ms. Evans, I am not comfortable in stopping there. I formally request that every member of this Board engage us in the next two weeks to help us address the issue. I will be back soon, and it would be really good if this does not need to be taken to the next step at this microphone publicly. Thank you all for your time this evening and your service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rebecca Golden, to be followed by Weena Zhao.
Good evening, school board members, FCPS staff, and Dr. Garza. My name is Rebecca Golden, and I'm a professor of mathematics at George Mason University, the president of the Fairfax County Association for the Gifted and the mother to four children in FCPS schools. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about Goal One, student success, as outlined in the FCPS 2015 to 2020 strategic plan. Thank you also for your efforts to maintain excellent schools. My children are thriving thanks to all of the committed teachers and educational leaders who have created what FCPS is today. I'm here to discuss the relationship between AAP Level 4 centers and Goal One student success. I was encouraged that this section of the strategic plan begins with a quote by Albert Einstein. "It is the supreme art of the teacher to awaken joy in creative expression and knowledge." Following this quote is the FCPS statement for student success. "We commit to reach, challenge, and prepare every student for success in school and life." Challenge is one of the core components of good education. Joy is essential to meet the emotional needs of learners. Goal One speaks to many types of learners, but I'm here to talk about highly gifted learners. The needs of highly gifted learners are significant as the student population is often under-challenged in a traditional classroom and even advanced academic courses. These children need that challenge, as well as community, friends, and joyful learning experiences, as do all children. FCPS has historically offered this challenge in the corresponding peer group to the most academically and intellectually thirsty students in grades 3 through 8 through Level 4 services and specifically AAP centers. We hope that funding continues for centers, as well as their related transportation, as proposed by Dr. Garza. Centers rely on students from several schools feeding into one school, where teachers can provide the challenge that highly gifted learners need in a classroom of kids with the same need. A critical mass of such students allows both economy of scale and community. Local 4 programs vary widely but do not generally offer the same concentration of highly gifted learners, community, or instructional level as centers, evidenced by countless individual stories, teacher commentary, performance on challenging mathematics competitions, and research on gifted education. Local Level 4 is not the same program as the center program. It does not always meet the needs of the kids for whom Level 4 was designed. As more Level 4 programs are introduced, it becomes difficult or even impossible to maintain a community or even a classroom of highly gifted learners. We hope that if faced with incomplete funding for next year's budget, the school board does not dismantle the center program by limiting its busing. Eliminating busing for some students may produce a small savings, but FCPS will not meet its commitment to challenge every student, including the young Einsteins in our broad FCPS community. Thank you.
Ms. Weena Zhao, to be followed by Ching Jing Lu.
Good evening. Thanks for this public comment opportunity. My name is Huina Gao from Providence District. I have two kids in FCPS. I moved to Fairfax County three years ago because of its excellence and dedication to public education, in particular the Advanced Academic Program, which symbolized the fundamental principle that every child is given the opportunity, full opportunity, to thrive. I'm here today in the wake of our current budget crisis, hoping to provide some input related to the importance and the prospect of the center-based AAP program, which is committed to challenge and prepare gifted and talented students for success in their future endeavors. Busing to AAP centers is on the list of recommended cuts by Budget Task Force. You might assume that a local Level 4 AAP and a center AAP are equivalent and interchangeable, and conclude that a decision to eliminate bus service will not be harmful because students have access to local Level 4 program. Unfortunately, these programs are not equal. I would say the distinction between them is highly regionally dependent because FCPS so far does not have a unified, comprehensive, and a measurable standard for a local Level 4 AAP program. And, you know, my local school, my base school, provides local Level 4 AAP service, but due to resource limitations, our principal wasn't able to establish a separate AAP class in the past, even though a majority of the parents expressed the concerns over the effectiveness of the setting. Second, the distinction is also student-dependent. It is subject to the students' individual learning models. The existence of both local and the center program allow parents to choose the best suitable learning environment for the students. Some parents may choose a neighborhood school because it serves their best interest. Some parents may need a center program considering the importance of a well-established peer group. Cutting transportation service is a deterrent, a big deterrent to parents like me, whose children need a center program but who do not have the resources to provide own transportation every day. I sincerely hope when making decisions on the budget priorities, please do consider that removing bus service will cause a tremendous hardship to students and families and will negate the quality and accessibility of the program. We should have supported the programs that help the kids grow, not holding some of them back because they do not live in a center, they do not live in a center school boundary. Every Level 4 child, every qualified Level 4 child, needs this opportunity for a center education regardless where she or he lives.
Thank you. Ching Jing Lu, to be followed by Robert Rigby.
Good evening. My name is Queen Ying Lu, and I live in Bright Dock District, represented by Megan McLaughlin. I'm a parent to a third grader in AAP Center at Willow Springs Elementary School and a kindergarten at Laura Ridge Elementary School. I'm here to talk to you regarding the strategic plan Goal One, student success. In my opinion, the goal of student success should apply to each and every In my opinion, the goal of student success should apply to each and every student in FCPS, and it should not leave anybody out. It should not leave the kids from the low-income families out. It should not leave the minority kids out, and with the equal importance, it should not leave the academically-advanced students out. However, the proposed cut of the AAP centers and the bus service to the centers would actually impair the student success for those with high academic potentials. Take my third grader as an example. He's a smart kid and acquired quite a lot of knowledge from books, on TV programs, and the internet. As a result, he used to complain a lot that the schoolwork was just too simple and boring to him, and he didn't want to go to school. His teacher also told us that he's not always concentrating on the lectures in the classroom. Things have changed a lot since he got into the AAP Center in the Willow Springs Elementary School this year. He stopped complaining about the schoolwork being too simple, and his behavior in the classroom also got a lot better. He now understands that he's one of the best academically, but not necessarily the best, and he needs to work hard in order to get ahead. I think AAP centers create an environment where these high-potential kids motivate and inspire each other, and this is extremely valuable and essential for these kids to be succeed, to be successful. Keeping AAP centers but eliminating the bus service to AAP centers defeats the purpose of having AAP centers. Many families with kids going to AAP centers, including ours, won't be able to afford to drive our kids to the schools every day, time-wise or money-wise. I think it would be so unfair and really sad to see an advanced kid having to leave the AAP Center just because there's no bus service provided, which might have a substantial impact to his entire life. On the FCPS website, the top belief is that each student is entitled to an excellent education that meets his or her individual needs. Academically-advanced students should not be the exception. I urge you to please keep the AAP centers and keep the bus service. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Robert Rigby, to be followed by Terry Adams.
Good evening. My name is Robert Rigby Jr. I'm the current president of a group called FCPS Pride. It's an organization certified to the Human Resources Department of allied and LGBT staff. We've also been joined by many parents of gay and transgender students, and our membership includes several sponsors of gay-straight alliances in our schools. I'm here tonight to make a plea. In listening to students and parents, I hear that while school is important, it is not the only or even most crucial issue. Named acceptance, even facilities and bathrooms are major concerns, but the central factor in students' lives are their families. In my GSA, I hear a great deal about conflict between youth and their families. I can see how, for many families, a youth saying, "Mom and Dad, my gender is not what you thought it was," would cause some surprise or turmoil. Kids coming out as lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender can put parents and family members in a spot where they never imagined, and they don't know what to do. They may not be able to speak to anyone in their lives but their child, and that puts a terrible burden on those students. Parents to whom I've spoken, even the most supportive, talk about needing resources and support in medical, social, religious, and counseling referrals. There are many nonprofits in our area and professionals, but the nonprofits cannot do it alone, nor do they have a way to let parents know they are there. So I'm asking you to do two things. Research and vet those medical, counseling, social, and support resources, and develop information for families. The second thing is to distribute this material and train the appropriate personnel, including social workers, counselors, school psychologists, DSSs, DSAs, principals, and assistant principals. The reality is that this family conflict greatly increases the risk among LGBT youth for suicide, skipping school, lower grades, dropping out, and also homelessness. I don't have all the answers. We don't have all the answers. I greatly respect the work that FCPS does with its students, and I'm encouraging and asking more specific efforts in support of LGBT youth and their families. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Terry Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Garza. I come to this issue as a retired United States Marine, retired local law enforcement officer, and perhaps most importantly, a parent of a Stewart High School graduate. And I'm just asking the board to change that name. We should commemorate and celebrate efforts to unite people and memorialize those who do. That is what makes us better, a better school, a better community, a better nation, a better world. Some people say that the name Jeb Stewart is part of our history, and we should not rewrite history. To that, I would say that there are many parts of our history, and there are many people in our history we don't commemorate as a nation, we do not celebrate or memorialize. There are many, there are no public schools that I'm aware of that are named for the abolitionist John Brown, or for people like Nate Turner, or Timothy McVeigh, or John Dillinger, or Bonnie and Clyde. Those are people, those are part of our history as a nation. There are no schools named for Dred Scott and the fight he engaged in to be recognized as a citizen despite being born in Virginia, something we all now take for granted. Taking up arms against the United States is never something we should celebrate, commemorate, or memorialize. It is inconsistent with our laws and our national identity. The only contribution to our society that I'm aware of that Jeb Stewart provided was divisive. It did not keep up with just about any word in the preamble to our Constitution, which is, of course, "we the people of the United States," in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Jeb Stewart represented none of that. To continue to have his name on this school serves no one. It reinforces a very wrong notion that his cause was noble. There is nothing noble about human trafficking in 2006, or in 1816, or any time before or since. There is nothing noble about allowing, not allowing women to vote or consider them as personal property. We don't celebrate that portion of our history because it does not comport with who we are. Our schools and our communities are model of diversity. Look at the choir. Look at the people that are playing basketball now in the gym. Bringing people together is what we are as a nation. We should focus our attention on making sure that that is what we support. It is never too late to do the right thing. Please change the name. Thank you.
That concludes Citizen Participation. Thank you all so much for coming out. Item 2.02, Student Representative Matters, I call on Mr. Press.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to begin my remarks this evening on a very, very happy note. Last Tuesday, the Student Advisory Council convened its annual student representative election at Woodson High School and selected the next student representative to the school board. I'm very, very proud to be able to present you, her, this evening. Laura Chu is here with us in the audience. She's a rising senior at Thomas Jefferson High School, and we're so thankful for her. Laura ran against 18 students from across the county in the largest election convention in our history. Everyone was very impressed by the profound dialogue and diverse perspectives shared in that convention. I'm very proud of Laura. She was my appointee to the AAPAC, and she plans to continue many of the important issues that this board has been working with over the past year, among which are equity of access to academic programs, building a budget that protects students, ensuring an equitable grading policy, and ensuring student mental health. I will be working with her over the next few months to ensure the transition from student representative to student representative is seamless. On the theme of the student representative election, I look forward to the board's action this evening on Policy 1802 to move the student representative election a little bit back to April. One of the challenges that I've discussed with many of you is that we've faced issues in promoting and encouraging participation in this election. One of the issues that we identified was the lack of geographic diversity from across our county, and that's an issue that I hope that this policy change will work to move. It is very important to me, as a student representative, having participated in so many of these conventions, that everyone who wishes to has the opportunity to run. When we have our best and brightest students come out and run for this position, the dialogue is elevated to such a level that really, we really can begin to tackle issues. As a side note, I'm also very excited that moving this policy change this evening will empower members of this board's student leadership cohort to run for this position. As we know from this year, the students do not really have enough time to get an appreciation for this board's work and for what the position means. So I'm very excited for that, and I hope it, I urge its passage this evening. One of the points that was consistently shared at the election convention was their concern over the FY 2017 budget, as I'm sure many of the board members there can attest. Nearly every candidate mentioned it, and I think it speaks to the concerns that our students have about the future of this grade system. Therefore, I was profoundly disappointed by the county executive's recommendation for a tax increase with no increase above the 3% arbitrary transfer guidance. It does not reflect our needs as a system, and I think the community has responded to that notion. We saw this at the Save FCPS rally this past Tuesday at the Government Center, when over 500 members of the community, in the largest demonstration I have ever seen at the Government Center, came out to advocate for more funds for our schools. It showed the community's feelings about where we need to be as a system and as a county. Schools are critical. As I have said time and time again, budgets should be a reflection of the community's values, whether at this board table or at the county's table. And I think that the county executive's proposed budget fails utterly at doing this with respect to schools. If schools truly are the board's supervisors' number-one priority, the proof is in the pudding. Moving on, I'm very excited to update the board on some of our work around mental health. I met with Assistant Superintendent Lipp last week and members of our school psychology staff to discuss ways we can move forward. After a very powerful discussion with her group and debriefing a recent discussion we had at the Student Advisory Council, we're going to be moving a collaborative effort forward to put together a repository of best practices around mental health awareness and promotion activities from schools around the county. One of the challenges we identified was that so many of our schools are working in a vacuum. We're not talking to each other as we should be and could be. Schools are doing some really good programming, and I want the lessons that they have learned to empower students at other schools to do the same. When that spirit of collaboration comes forward, the programming and the impact become so much more meaningful. I look forward to taking that discussion forward with Assistant Superintendent Lipp, Dr. Garza, and members of this board, along with the Student Advisory Council. We hope to have a draft of that document ready before the end of this school year, and I'll be happy to update the board as that progresses. I'd like to end my comments this evening with a word of congratulations to the first graduates of the class of 2016. I was very fortunate to be able to join over 100 of our distinguished graduates at the Bryant Alternative High School and Mountain View Alternative High School graduations. I was absolutely inspired by the passion and sheer joy that they had at receiving a diploma. These alternative programs are some of the most powerful in FCPS, and the wide range of students that they serve really speaks to the excellent work that these schools do. So with that, I'd like to congratulate all of you and thank many of the members of the board who joined me at that graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Ms. Chu, you have big shoes to fill. Thank you for joining us tonight, but by all accounts, you are up to the task, so we're happy to have you. Item 2.03, Spotlight on Learning. American Association for the Advancement of Science, Senior Scientists and Engineers, and the STEAM Project in FCPS. I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's always one of the most exciting opportunities that we have is to highlight great programs that are going on in our schools, and we have lots of them. As Ben pointed out, lots of great things going on in our schools across Fairfax County. Tonight, we're going to have an opportunity to highlight some wonderful work being done around science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics in two of our wonderful schools, Haley Elementary School and Lake Anne Elementary School. We have a whole host of folks who are going to be able to tell you about these wonderful programs, and I think you'll be delighted, inspired, and certainly very impressed. I believe Andrea Han, our STEAM Education Specialist, will introduce our film in just a moment. I would like to, very briefly, unless you're going to do it, introduce some of the folks we have here tonight to talk about this. If I miss anyone, Andrea, you're in charge of making sure I didn't miss anyone tonight. Of course, Scott Seder, who's on the front row here. Scott's our Technology and Engineering Education and STEAM Integration Program Manager, and I think he does the work of about three or four people. He's got lots of things going on. We're really impressed and appreciative of his work. Then we have two outstanding principals, Jamie Chianetta, who is the principal at Haley Elementary School, right here on the front row, and then we have Jill Stewart, who's the principal at Lake Anne Elementary School, and we're happy to have them here tonight. And then they have some of their team with them. We have Janice Van, who's a STEAM Resource Teacher at Haley Elementary School. Excuse me. Holly, what was I saying? I'm sorry. Holly, thank you. Diane Overton, who's an Advanced Academics and STEAM Resource Teacher at Lake Anne Elementary School. Doug, and we also have Doug Rambo, who's a physicist, and he's a volunteer with the American Association of the Advancement of Science. And I find, and I know the board appreciates this, that when we have these wonderful programs going on in our schools, the volunteers really help us bring relevance to that, so we're very appreciative of our volunteers who help make that happen. We also have a wonderful student here with us today, Casey Banga. I hope I said your last name right. I'm really messing up on names tonight, so I'm sorry about that. And then I think we have Dawn Ray with us, who's helping us coordinate all the volunteers, which is also a very big job, so we thank him for being here. So Andrea, again, if I messed up anything else, please correct me, and we're very happy to have you all here tonight. We're looking forward to hearing more about the great work that you have going on. And so Andrea, I'll let you kind of tee up the video, if that's okay.
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Garza said, my name is Andrea Han. I'm an STEAM Specialist for Fairfax County Public Schools. I'm here tonight to share with you a Spotlight on Learning presentation to highlight the work of volunteers from the American Academy for the Advancement of Science, also called AAAS. This organization works to promote and support STEM education and has over 170 volunteers in the greater Washington DC area. The STEAM Project team collaborates with AAAS to place retired and current practicing scientists and engineers in FCPS classrooms across all grade levels, as well as in after-school clubs. This goal of enriching students' STEAM education is made possible and enriched by this collaboration. Currently, we have initiated 30 teacher-volunteer partnerships. This reinforces real-world and career connections for students, as well as providing support for teachers. As career scientists and engineers, these volunteers have in-depth and unique content knowledge that can enrich learning experiences for both students and teachers. Tonight's video will highlight two partnerships between FCPS teachers and AAAS volunteers. So let's watch the video.
Today, here's what we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about relative density.
Hi, this is me, Casey, listening to my teacher, Ms. Overton. She's teaching with Mr. Rambo, who's a real scientist known all over the country for his work in physics.
There are tanks on a submarine that hold water and hold air in them.
Mr. Rambo is a volunteer with the American Association for the Advancement of Science.
So that's how a submarine works.
Thirty AAAS volunteers have been placed in classrooms across FCPS to help students and teachers learn more about science and STEAM careers.
Did you guess appropriately?
Yeah. The scientists and engineers come to school at least once a week all year long.
We're going to level this off.
That's much better.
Right?
At Haley Elementary School, second graders are working with a chemical engineer, Kendra Shaluder.
Work better.
They're mixing chemicals together and seeing what happens.
See how it's... See how it's changed?
Uh huh.
Looks different, right?
We made Play-Doh today out of like, out of salt, water, and flour. Helps us learning how to be chemical engineers when we grow up.
By the end of the first year of STEAM Lab, kids were coming up to me all the time saying, "I want to be an engineer. I want to be an architect. I want to do this, that, that." So showing them that these skills are not far-fetched, that they are accessible, that, you know, making Play-Doh is chemical engineering is very enlightening and empowering for these students.
Back at my school, Ms. Overton works with Mr. Rambo before class to set up our lessons.
We can have them weigh these. That'll give them mass.
Okay. In the elementary school, we learn the pedagogy of teaching. You might have one or two classes in science, but that's about all we get. Doug will give me information, and he'll explain it to me.
This guy.
And then I will say back to him, "So here's what you're telling me," and then I will put it in kid language, things that I know the kids will be able to understand, and that's a great combination.
There's a variety of struggles that I think schools have today to maintain a level of expertise where a kid will walk into class one day and say, "Mr. Rambo, what is dark matter?" And expect an answer. And that was a third grader, real question. Once we had the conversation of, are we talking about Star Wars? Are we talking about dark matter, as the scientists are exploring today? We had the conversation and gave him the three-sentence answer for, "This is why dark matter is important. This is what the scientists are doing, and I hope you have, I hope you understand that." And he was satisfied with the answer. It's important to do it the same way for every one of them?
Our physicist has added just tremendous amounts to our classroom experience.
So write down 100.
He can explain to the kids what relevance what we're learning in class has to the real world.
What kind of scientist would be interested in things in water? Okay, marine biologist? Oceanographers?
The kids here are always engaged because Doug comes up with, "Well, hey, did you know that?" And then he'll tell them something about how that science is being used in the real world, and all of a sudden, they're like, "Wait, maybe we should learn about electromagnets because you just gave me five examples that I see in my regular day-to-day life." Where do you think this cherry tomato is going to land when we put it in the tube? Just find a neighbor.
It's amazing that what I'm learning is that is actually used in the real world. It makes me want to learn more about it.
Relative density.
Listening to my teacher, Ms. Overton. She's teaching with Mr. Rambo, who's a real scientist known all over the country for his work in physics.
There are tanks on a submarine that hold water and hold...
I think they thought we wanted to see more. The STEAM project is a collaborative instructional services department team. Our mission includes facilitating relationships with professionals to support authentic, hands-on experiences that will inspire and engage all students. We are excited about the impact that our collaboration with AAAS has had on students, teachers, and in building connections to community members. We look forward to their continued support in our mission of providing authentic learning experiences for students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's so great to bring some of the classroom here into the boardroom. We really appreciate this wonderful job. And I think we have some board members who would like to maybe ask questions and make comments, if that's okay. Ms. Dar...
Do you mind if I invite some of our friends? Casey, would you like to join us? Mr. Rambo? Ms. Van?
Did anyone else have something they wanted to say? Or... Okay, all right. Ms. Darinette Kofax?
Yes, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight, and I have a comment, and then maybe I'll ask Casey a question. I met members of AAAS at a community event and was so impressed at the work that they do, and I'm so grateful that we have had this spotlight to enlighten everybody. This is an example, Mr. Press, of what you were talking about, this kind of amazing collaborative learning that is out there. Thank you so much to our volunteers. Thank you so much, sir, for volunteering your time and being part of it. You enhance and enrich our curriculum in great ways. Mr. Press also talked about wanting, this is something that we would love in all of our schools because we know how valuable you are, and it's just a matter of being able to do that. But I would like to, Casey, since you talked, just a quick question. What do you like best about this kind of learning? You stated it a little bit, but...
It's kind of like every time you go in and work with all, you know, do all the fun experiments, you kind of learn something new that you might not expect to have learned or figure something out that, you know, you wouldn't think is as important as it really is. It's just fun.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, proud parents over there, Casey, for letting, for sharing him with us tonight. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Schultz, did you have something?
So first of all, I want to know who narrated the video. Okay, so people who've been on the board for a while know that I'm not a fan of videos because I want us to use our money smartly. That was some smart money. That was very wise because you learned some stuff narrating it, didn't you? Was that cool? Was it cool to hear your voice? Did it sound different?
It sounded higher.
It sounded higher. There's probably some scientific explanation for that. Two, I wanted to ask, how did you become a volunteer? Did you, were you originally a parent at the school?
I, yes, I have two children, but they went through Loudoun County Public Schools. The program advertises its presence in a variety of different forums, and I think I spotted it in the Fairfax section of the Washington Post, and that brought me to Dawn and the program, and then subsequent to that, to Lake Anne and to Ms. Overton.
So I think any way that we can, because I want a physicist, you know, I want a scientist, any way that we can advertise and reach out, you know, we have lots of very interesting buildings where interesting stuff happens all around our county, and, you know, some of that has to be, I think, proactive to bring, to bring them into the schools. And then at some point, I'd love to come and have an experience in one of these schools, especially if you teach how you get bridges built, because I've always been fascinated how they get the pilings. That's always been a fascination of mine. But anyway, I want to thank you personally for dedicating your time because you've gone above and beyond. You're not currently a parent in our system, and reaching out through either academic associations, professional associations to get and populate more of you throughout the system is just, would be a gem.
We'll take you up on your offer to publicize the program further. I think with very little publicity, we've managed to get quite a few volunteers into the school, and I think with a little bit of help, that number could grow.
Great. Mr. Press?
Thank you. I think this just really is a testament to the wonderful human capital we have in our county. I think that when we can capitalize on that and bring it in to our schools and use that to benefit our students, as Casey so articulately and wonderfully shared, and it's so impressive that you're able to come up here, because I remember, I came up here for the first time, and I was dead scared. I could not do it. So you are awesome. Thank you for being here. But, you know, I just wanted to say, I think this really speaks to, again, to the wonderful human capital we have and the opportunities we have, and I think, to the previous point, by publicizing this further, we can really empower student achievement, and I look forward to seeing how that progresses in the, in the short and long term. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Out of the mouth of babes, you echoed very much, Mr. Press, something that, in listening to tonight's presentation, Dr. Garza, I was also reflecting on the fact that in a county of a million people, highest per capita college graduates, we do have subject matter experts in a whole host of academic areas. And my father-in-law alone, 40 years with the American Bankers Association, tremendous expert on finance. And I think about the, you know, retirees, like my father-in-law, who still resides in Fairfax County, Casey captured it best. You have someone who comes in who is an expert in that field, and it makes it real. It makes it relate to everyday things that happen in your world, and it makes it exciting to then learn the concepts because now you can tangibly understand why these topics matter. And so whether it's through the Fairfax County Foundation, whether it's through Jay Grant and our community outreach, but I do hope that we, as a system, can look at this as not just a wonderful model for increasing interest in STEAM and STEM, but really, truly in all areas and careers, because we have an opportunity to help shape the lives and the interests of young people like Casey, and it is through exposure. And Casey, I just want to thank you very much for coming here tonight on a school night and allowing all of us, school board members, to get really excited to see that beautiful smile on your face and to know that everyone's efforts in this room to try and make your education meaningful were somehow succeeding in little bitty ways each day. So keep up the good work, and I hope you continue to be inspired, not just through your years in Fairfax, but in throughout your life.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you all, again, as everybody has said, for coming. And I'd also like to acknowledge that not only is it wonderful to have volunteers, such professional volunteers, to come in and help, and young students with such presence. What also helps to make the STEAM program work is that we actually have central support people, like Ms. Hand, who come and help put this all together. And I know Scott Seder is our other program specialist that does STEAM, and this means that throughout the county, we can take advantage of the good work of our volunteers. And in other parts of the county, we are doing STEAM through the arts, because I know you've met with some of the folks in McLean, and we've had STEAM through French, and the hands-on experience and the ideas and the ability to pull it all together. So, Dr. Garza, I want to thank you and ISD's leadership because in order to really elevate and make the best use of the good work of people in individual schools, we need people who can help us be the leaven throughout the county so that we can use it in so many different ways. So thank you very much.
Ms. Palchik?
A lot has been said, and I want to thank all of you again. I also want to thank your teacher. I think you said something, it's very clear. I started a reverse engineering club, but only because I had a physicist who could do the technical part, and I was able to work with him and make sure that, you know, we were at developmentally appropriate in reaching the kids and working together. I think AAAS is fabulous. I've only known it at the fellows level, so I'm so glad that we have so much skill, not just going to the PhD students in our country, but also at the elementary school level. As one of my favorite physicists, Richard Feynman, said, "College is too late. High school is too late." We really have to start and get that spark going in STEAM at this age. So thank you. It's, I think, an invaluable partnership. I know it's not always easy. It's new. The fact that you've piloted this is incredible, and I do hope you'll help all of us spread it to every school in our county. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll just add one thing. As the representative up here from Reston, it's very, it's great to see one of our stars from Lake Anne Elementary here. Thank you. You are representing all of Reston here tonight, and we're proud of you and our new leadership at Lake Anne Elementary. It's good to see you. I will come out and say hi. All right. Thank you all so very much for sharing with us tonight. We are at the action items, part of our agenda. Item 3.01, Strategic Plan Goal One, Student Success. I call on Mr. Moon for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the Strategic Plan Goal Number One, Student Success Report, as listed in the agenda items and is presented on December 17, 2015, and January 21, 2016.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Palchik. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. This school year, 2015 and 2016, marks the first year of implementation of the new strategic plan since the school board adopted in July of the last year. As we all remember, the new strategic plan, the IGNITE, represents the cooperative work of the school board and the leadership team with a significant community input to create a long-term plan for continuous improvement for the school system. At the core of this plan is the FCPS portrait of a graduate, and the plan contains four strategic goals: student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. All of the goals contain overarching strategies, desired outcomes, actions, and monitoring metrics. The report received by the school board on December 17 of the last year and January 20 of this year provides an update on the current work that supports Goal One, student success. It well addresses the four different overarching strategies and the desired outcomes under each strategy, explains our actions, and provides valuable data on the monitoring metrics. I want to thank all the hard work done by the superintendent. Where are you, Dr. Garza? Thank you, Dr. Garza, and your staff members to prepare the report, and of course, all those teachers and other school-based employees who work directly on a daily basis with our students to help them succeed. As this is the first report under the new strategic plan, there may be areas where board members may feel that we may want to try somewhat differently in the next year. And I believe later this year, perhaps in June, the school board will have further opportunities to have that discussion. Again, this report presented to us fairly well addresses what the board had agreed and directed a step to work on, and I would like to ask for my colleagues' support.
Ms. Palchik, did you have something to add? You don't, that's okay. I was just wondering. We have had many opportunities to review and discuss this information publicly, so we probably, we might even be talked out on something here. So the motion, Dr. Garza, did you want to say something?
Yes, and I apologize, Mr. Moon, but you may have already mentioned that for every one of our goal reports, we actually schedule three public meetings around those. So as you pointed out, Chairman Hines, there have been a number of meetings on these reports and quite in-depth conversations around them as well.
Thank you. So the motion on the table is that the school board approve the Strategic Plan Goal One, Student Success Report, as listed in the agenda items and presented on December 17, 2015, and January 21, 2016. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, action item 3.02, Revision to Policy 1802. I call on Ms. Corbett Sanders for the motion.
I move that the school board approve the proposed revisions to Policy 1802 to change the timing for the election of the student representative to the school board by the Student Advisory Committee from February to April, beginning in the 2017-18 school year.
Is there a second?
Second. I have just a question, and I should have noticed this before. Is this supposed to begin in the 2016-17 school year? Can we do a kind of a friendly amendment on that?
Yes, actually, it should be.
As chair, I should have caught that before we sat down, so I think it's supposed to be 2016-17.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to speak to your motion, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I do. We have been very blessed over the past several years and through the history of this program to have excellent representatives, Ben Press being one of the best we've had. And we have this wonderful new program that's only been in existence for the past four years, I believe, on the student leadership cohort. And the student leadership cohort was put together as an opportunity to provide insights into what it's like to be on the school board for students from around the county. And that cohort is usually appointed by representatives of the school board every fall, and they are actually, the candidates are reviewed and approved upon in December. In the past, the election took place in February, which was a very short period of time and provided limited opportunities for the members of the leadership cohort to get the experience. They would need to better appreciate all of the hard work that people like Ben do on the school board. And so by moving the election to April, it provides a longer period of time for our students to take a look at us and how we work. It also provides a longer period of time for us to encourage students to take advantage of this opportunity. And so I think moving to April is a positive experience for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Darinette Kofax, would you like to speak? Ms. Darnak Kofax, would you like to speak?
Just briefly, Ms. Corbett Sanders was quite thorough. Mr. Press, just thank you for bringing this to our attention. You made a very logical, reasonable analysis of why we should change this. We all agreed and we're happy to move it for the next calendar year and beyond. So thank you.
Any other discussion? No? All right, seeing none. The motion before us is that the school board approve the proposed revisions to Policy 1802 to change the timing for the election of the student representative to the school board by the Student Advisory Committee from February to April, beginning in the 2016-17 school year. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I should have caught it earlier. We have a student representative for 2016 and 17 already, so this should be for 17 and 18 as written.
So I further confused things, didn't I? So it's actually the election for the following year. Okay, my bad. Let's go back to 2017-18. Sorry. Okay, I think maybe we should just clarify that what we're talking about is the election that will happen next spring for the following school year, 2017-18. Okay.
Madam Chair, my opinion, the policy up there as it's written is pretty clear. I think the way it's stated with the "from February to April, beginning in the 2016-17 school year," it's not for the student representative effective during that year. So I think, I think, I think that, that policy as it's written is fine. That's just my opinion.
Okay. I think we know the sense of the board, so that's fine. We're not going to start next year. So, all right, thank you very much. Sorry to confuse everybody. Item 3.03, Opening of the New Level Four Center at Cooper Middle School. I call on Ms. Strauss for the motion.
Thank you very much. I am very pleased to offer this motion tonight. Cooper Middle School has been working for three years now to fully develop its AAP center. I move that the school board authorize the establishment of a new Advanced Academic Center, AAP, in the fall of 2016 at Cooper Middle School, and further recommend that in the fall of 2016, Cooper-based, rising seventh and eighth grade center-eligible students currently assigned to Kilmer and Longfellow have the option to attend the new Cooper Middle School Center or their current center. In the fall of 2017, Cooper-based, rising seventh grade students currently assigned to Kilmer and Longfellow will be required to attend Cooper Center. Rising eighth grade students in the fall of 2017 will have the option to attend Cooper or their current center. In the fall of 2018, Cooper-based, rising seventh and eighth grade center-eligible students will be required to attend the Cooper Level Four Center.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. Ms. Strauss, did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Cooper Middle School has been developing the AAP Center for a number of years now. Their leadership is committed to a strong and robust AAP Center. They are well-prepared to offer a high-quality Level Four AAP Center program. There will be, in fact, there is now, a critical mass of AAP Level Four eligible students. With this change, it will grow. And by the way, Longfellow and Kilmer Centers will continue to have a critical mass in those centers as well. All the AAP teachers needed at Cooper have the AAP endorsement. In fact, it's my understanding, I believe, that they have the largest number of endorsed AAP teachers of any middle school in the county. Longfellow Middle School and Kilmer Middle School are currently over capacity, which is actually the reason why we need to open another center. Cooper Middle School has capacity for additional students. In fact, they have vacant classrooms now. So for all of these reasons, I am delighted to offer this motion. And again, for the parents who are listening, Dr. Presidio at our last school board meeting did go over the process, the survey, the parent comments. The major comment from parents was to please make the center attendance optional next fall, which it is, so that is Option Two. Students who begin whatever center they choose next fall as seventh graders, they will remain as eighth graders where they have started, so that it isn't until the fall of 2017 that then the boundary becomes a required boundary. And as we are phasing in the center, transportation remains available to all of the students based on their choice of which center they wish to attend. So I am very pleased to designate Cooper Middle School as an AAP Center. They have a program that is very worthy, and I urge my colleagues to support this.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to support this motion. As a board member who served when the school board decided to create Kilmer Center back in late 1990s, I have a fond memory as to how a, you know, a new center, Kilmer Center, which they require, you know, students who used to attend Longfellow GT Center, at the time it used to call a GT Center, to go to Kilmer Center, you know, worried about whether Kilmer would be, Kilmer Center would be successful. That, look at Kilmer Center, how successfully it has been. You're going to make sure that Cooper Center, Cooper AAP Center, will be as successful, if not more successful, than any other center in the county.
Thank you. Mr. McLeary?
I would just add on to Mr. Moon's comments that I was a student at Kilmer when it was expanded to an AAP Center, so I concur with you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I've had the benefit of seeing the Cooper Center evolve over time. As part of the AAP Advisory Committee, Arlene, who was the principal at Cooper, started on this path about three years ago. And the deliberate and strategic manner in which she and her team approached this was truly admirable and something that should be modeled elsewhere. They worked very closely with their community. They spent a lot of time brainstorming and collaborating about what the design of the center would be, and they got the professional development. And I am truly impressed and pleased to support this.
Any other comments or questions? Oh, Ms. Huff.
Yes, I will be supporting this as well. I received overwhelming feedback in my own inbox to support Option Two, and I did receive some concerns and will absolutely love to stay in communication with those families as well to make sure that as Cooper is up and running and it becomes required for those families, that we make sure that, that what you've been insured of is being put in place for the center. So I look forward to continuing that communication.
Ms. McGlaughlin?
A quick question and then a comment. So Ms. Strauss, for the families who are watching this, could you just clarify, in addition to obviously the Cooper-based community that will now ultimately by fall 2018 all attend the Cooper Level Four Center? Are there other elementary feeders that are going to be coming into Cooper?
Madam Chair, may I answer directly?
Oh, please, yes, go ahead.
Okay. The Cooper Center will actually become the middle school AAP Center for the Langley Pyramid. Langley Pyramid, for whatever reason, has never had its own AAP Center. The students have been passed out to other centers. So this will, it simply will accommodate the elementary schools that feed into the Langley Pyramid, and that, that is that.
Okay, and that's helpful for me to understand because Kilmer and Longfellow, even though those are not in my district in Braddock, as I understand, they serve different high school pyramids. So the goal now is that the students in the Langley Pyramid will have that middle school central feeder, just like in my district where I have the Woodson Pyramid elementary schools all feed into Frost.
Precisely. Longfellow serves the McLean Pyramid, Kilmer serves the Marshall Pyramid, and I was with Mr. Moon when we created the center at Kilmer and also when we created the center here at Jackson, so.
So for Marshall High School, they go, so they share. Then Madison is Madison High School students who are AAP. I'm trying, the reason, my line of questioning, I apologize, is that I know one of the things that we're looking at in our school system is the fact that as families try and wrestle with the offerings of Level Four Centers at the middle school level, it's whether or not, do you then have a sole source feeder into the same high school or do you split off? And so...
It may not be sole everywhere. I guess, Dr. Garza...
I didn't bring where every elementary student's go, but right now, the Madison feeder pattern doesn't have its own, just like we've...
Thank you, that's, that's all.
I just went blank.
Yep. That's okay.
I've been there many, many times.
Madison's is thorough.
Thorough, thank you.
Yes.
Now, they've been working on it.
Right.
But they just haven't progressed to the extent, I think, in the future. I think we'll, potentially, the board will have some opportunity to consider a center there. But I did want to comment, since I have a chance, I mentioned last time, so I thought, I think it'd be appropriate again. I've never seen a school more well-prepared for an AAP Center. As was pointed out, they've been very intentional. As was, you know, teachers have been trained, they have a vibrant program that's already being offered. They've collaborated, I think, quite well with Longfellow and Kilmer. They're offering some of the comparable programming right now, and so many are choosing. And I think it's also important to note that all three of these schools have critical mass. They have a sizable number of students to make a quality program. So we're not suggesting that we do this in every middle school, but where we have the conditions, where we have the quality, the staff that's well-prepared, they've been trained, we have enough students to offer, you know, the rich program offerings, then I think that we have to consider those.
And Dr. Garza, thank you for capturing an important point that I wanted to make, which is that when you look at our commitment as a school system to now open up a center such as this, while I fully support Ms. Strauss's advocacy, her community's advocacy, to what I believe is extremely generous phasing in process, I mean, I, having gone through a boundary change in my own district very recently, I wish my colleagues had wanted to be as generous, quite honestly, for phasing students in and out of a school, and we weren't, quite frankly. But what's important is that I think this vote tonight enables us to honor those children and their families, and I hope my colleagues will be very mindful that in the goodwill and this good stewardship of tonight's vote, we take to heart making these choices in the future for other communities and other children. And the other thing I will say is that I happen to be someone who firmly believes in community schools. And so more and more, where we can have children remain in their neighborhood pyramids, and that's what this enables us to do with, with the Cooper Center. And so for all of those reasons, Ms. Strauss, I appreciate the work you've done engaging your community. I appreciate your community coming out and helping our board better understand what they feel is in the best interest of, of their children. And I do hope that more and more of the Cooper families will see how great the center is and maybe decide even earlier to, you know, remain with the Cooper Center.
No other discussion? So we will go ahead and vote on the motion. I'm not going to reread the whole motion, but basically is that the school board authorize the establishment of the new Advanced Academic Center program at Cooper Middle School in fall 2016 with all the details in the agenda item. Those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Action item 3.04, To Change the 2015-16 School Calendar to Include... Oh, I'm sorry. I will now actually pass the gavel to Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my honor to be able to hold this gavel even for a few minutes. Now we have the action item number 3.04, Changed 2015-16 School Calendar to Include a Teacher and Student Holiday on March 1 to Accommodate Voters for the Presidential Primary. Let me call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I move that the school board approve the proposed calendar change by creating a teacher and student holiday on March 1, 2016.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Evans. Ms. Hines, you want to speak on your motion?
Yes, thank you. For those who have been following, you may remember that back in October of 2015, this board, in response to the request and urging of the electoral board here in Fairfax County, amended the calendar to provide a two-hour late opening on primary day, March 1. As you may know, March 1 is Super Tuesday, and there will be a presidential primary that day. We have many, many schools that actually have polling locations within them. We have not closed on primary day before, but there has been a concern, you know, for some months now, that this would be an unusual primary day, which is why back in October, the board decided to provide the late opening, reasoning that most voters come in the morning or in the evening and that we didn't want to lose a school day for students. And we also had at that time guidance from the State Department of Education that if we closed school for that day, we would have to add another student school day somewhere else in the calendar, which would have meant extending the school year by a day or taking a teacher work day. So that was, that was part of what went into our reasoning back in October, that we would just do a two-hour delay. Our effort then was to do it early and with plenty of community engagement and notice and so, well, best-laid plans, because here we are in February, looking at it again. There has been a few weeks now of increasing concerns from some in the community about the likely turnout on primary day. We can see what has happened in other parts of the country, and that's a concern. And that really, I think, poses not so much a concern for safety for our students, but in conversations with Dr. Garza and staff, there are increasingly worries about parking and traffic and whether we would be able to have a good day for students on that day. The other thing that we have noticed very recently are other school systems around Virginia closing for primary day, making the decision now as we are. This is not the ideal time to make a change in the calendar, we recognize that. But I think a lot of school systems around Virginia are finding themselves in the same position where facts have changed and they're, they're changing their minds. Another change that has come just in the last week was new guidance from the State Department of Education that we actually can take a student holiday on March 1 and count it as ours. We can take it out of our inclement weather hours, because that's how we build inclement weather time into our calendar in Fairfax County Public Schools. So now, the guidance has changed, and it turns out that we don't have to add a day, a student school day later in the school year. So I think that also, at least for me, makes it easier to make this change in the calendar. I, I will say, this is not ideal. We're running a school system, not an election, right? First principle is kids should be in school. It's also not ideal to be discussing and voting on anything in the same night, particularly a change in the calendar. So I appreciate the rest of the school board and the community being willing to sort of bear with us on this. We have had some feedback from the community already, and there are some concerns. We've been hearing for a while from the community that there are several people out there who have wanted us to close school, so we've already gotten that feedback ahead of time. But I, I think, given, given the concerns and the new information from the state, I at least can support closing schools now on primary day. We will, of course, have a lot of questions and an opportunity now to have a conversation, so we'll take plenty of time here to do that, but I hope my colleagues can support this.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Ms. Evans?
I have no comments at this time, Mr. Moon.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you very much. I think Ms. Hines explained it very well. We clearly do not like to be able to, have to change the calendar in such a quick fashion and to propose it and vote on it the same night, but clearly, events have overtaken us. The changed decision by the State Board of Education was a major change for us, where we do not have to take a student holiday. We certainly are aware that, that parents would be very concerned if we had to take the Memorial Day weekend or a day off of spring break. And, and at the same time, we've been watching the very large turnouts in the other primaries. So we have found ourselves in this position. And certainly, I don't, we're not concerned for the safety of our children, but we have to, because we are a polling place... to, because we are a polling place, we have to have an orderly day in process for everyone who's going to be used in our school building. We wouldn't want to be in the position of making it difficult for people to vote. We want to make sure that they can park and find their spot easily. And we also have to make sure that our children and our teachers also have a good school day. And it was, in the last couple of days, it was becoming clear that we might not be able to achieve either of those goals. So I do support, in this unusual situation, taking the day off. In my over 20 years on the school board, we have never canceled school for primary day, never. So this is usually not what we do, but I think it is in the best interest of our children, our teachers, and our citizens who will want to vote on that day. So we are doing our duty to our community to make sure that the day goes off well and organized for everyone involved. Thank you.
Ms. McAlpin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one question for Dr. Garza. Many of us have been approached about after-school activities on that day. Will all of our after-school activities that have already been planned proceed?
First of all, we will have SAC. SAC will have normal business hours, so parents that would have concern, assuming this is approved by the board, concern about daycare, that they will operate with normal business hours. Evening activities, where we can accommodate them, and that's mostly in our middle schools and high schools where they have significant parking or are able to still provide access to the building, we will allow those to continue. So we're working with principals to identify those events now, and assuming this is approved tonight, we will have our principals communicate that with their publics. But we think most of them can be accommodated. Some of them were already canceled due to the facilities needing to be used for election day activities, but some of the concerts and some of those things, we think, can still be accommodated.
Okay. Just, I think we need to be clear when communicating that, because I know some staff have already heard from region offices that that's not the case. So hopefully, the message goes out tonight. I look forward to supporting this motion. I commend Dr. Garza and staff, along with Ms. Hines, for pushing through with this, finding a way to make this work and accommodate as many people in our community as possible to vote.
Mr. Press to be followed by Ms. Corbin Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I want to lead in with a brief thought on this, having been in this system for 12 years now. I can say that there have been a lot of things that have changed, a lot of things that have stayed the same, perhaps rightly so, some not so rightly so. I think this is one of those precedents, you know, as was stated, we've never closed for a primary day before. And I think that being placed in this position should encourage reflection on the part of this board and leadership team to say, is this the right precedent? The situation we're being placed in now, I think, speaks to the fact that we have a very engaged electorate in this county of a million people, many of whom are very politically active, being so close to the nation's capital. And I think it's important that we evaluate, going forward as we design calendars for future years, that we incorporate this into those discussions. You know, and while it, you know, may be sometimes convenient to blame the process or whatever, I think we have to evaluate the way we think about the primary days and election days moving forward. And I think the motion that's in front of this board now is, I think, one that I, as a student representative, can fully support. I've interacted with many students to discuss this in the short time, albeit, that I've had to do so, and I've seen overwhelming support from it, not just because students are in favor of closing school, which is generally a popular proposition among students. I know that'll be a big surprise to you all, but because I've actually heard from many students who feel like having a delay is not significant accommodation enough for them to go out and exercise their right to vote, particularly our juniors and seniors who may be of age and are registered voters. I think, you know, this board encourages students to exercise their civic duties and responsibilities. I think that's one of the, that we should continue to empower them to. And I think that this precedent that we may be setting this evening will be one that I would hope that this board will carry forward to future calendars. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Corbin Sanders to be followed by Ms. Perchek, Mrs. Schurz, and Mr. Darren Kofax.
Thank you. This has been a tough discussion amongst many of us in the past week, and the discussion is because we are faced with having to make a decision about closing school after we've also had a significant loss of classroom time as a result of multiple snow days. And so it's a decision that none of us take lightly. And I will tell you that, over the past several weeks, I have repeatedly said, what has materially changed between now and the discussion that took place last October? And there are things that have materially changed, and I think it's important for people to understand how the changes occurred. Those changes include a wonderful advent in our society as a whole across the country that was manifested in both Iowa and New Hampshire, where more than expected outcome of voters, many more voters showed up than was originally expected. And in New Hampshire this past week, a number of streets in front of schools were blocked because the traffic jams were so great in getting into those schools to vote. So that is one change. The second change is that there's a recognition here in the state of Virginia that this is a different election from the expectation of numbers of voters. And the State Board of Elections actually sent a memo to the local boards of elections on the 5th of February, which was after our last board meeting, in which they asked their local boards to approach each of the state, each of the school boards. So that is another marked difference. The third difference is that, even in my local polling place, which I have voted in the same place since I was 25, which is a long time, and we've always voted in the same room. Because of concerns about ADA access, many of our schools are being asked to move the polling location to another space which makes it more accessible. Once again, something that we welcome, because we want as many people as possible to be able to vote. But the new location will require people to go throughout the school building, and that does have disruptive effects on some of our students and student learning. And so, as passionate as I am about limiting the amount of time that we actually have kids not in school, this is a decision that I think I have to support, although I would like to have some insight on two areas. The first insight is, and I think Dr. Garza has already answered the question that was posed by Mr. McAlpin and I posed earlier, as to the assessments for our music programs, which are scheduled for March 1. These are very important pre-assessment concerts, because those students will be graded on their assessments two weeks later. And so I encourage that we provide the opportunity for the kids to perform on March 1. The second area is one, which is, do we have any flexibility where we have the opportunity to... Today, we're closing early on the last day of the quarter. Would there be any flexibility to making that a full day?
You know, first of all, we can do anything the board wishes to do. It would be my recommendation not to change the current calendar because of, you know, that time is being planned, you know, already in some cases for, for example, grading for teachers. We have a workday, just plans, you know, when you change the calendar, just like we're doing for this closure, or you take time back that people had anticipated being off, that creates additional hardship. We are fortunate in that, a year or two ago, we made the decision, after my first year here, we missed, I think, eight or 10 days of school, and we had to add two days to the end of the school calendar, which no one liked. You'll remember that. No one appreciated that. And we said, let's not do that again. So we added time into the calendar so that we would, you know, not have to make up where we're missing days. So we have, assuming this is approved tonight, we still have six additional days left in the current calendar before any days are required to be made up. That is unique and different to surrounding jurisdictions. They're all having to struggle with making up days from the blizzard and other things. So we would not, because of the recent change in kind of their interpretation of their current law or policy, it wasn't a change in their rules, it was a change in their interpretation, we're able to use that 990 hours and no longer have to revert to the 180 days.
And that's an increase in hours for all of our students that was introduced when you first got here, because before...
Last year.
Or last year. So we used to have 180 days, and that was it, and then you had to add more.
Because we did not meet the requirement...
For time in classroom.
For either one, we had to add days to the end of the school year. So we said, well, let's always make sure that we have enough banked time, that we will always meet the 990-hour requirement, assuming, you know, we have a lot of that built in, so we have a lot of flexibility.
Thank you. I have Ms. Perchek to be followed by Ms. Schurz.
First of all, I want to also say, it hasn't been an easy decision. I know we've been having many conversations around this. I do want to thank you for clarifying that SAC programs will be open, after-school activities at all high schools and middle schools.
Where we're struggling with making a blanket statement today, because we need to spend some time, you know, determining what those evening activities are, our primary concern is around our elementary schools. Many of our elementary schools, and I don't have to tell our community about this, because they know, about 125 of our elementary schools are used as polling places. Some of our elementary schools only have 30 parking spots in total. So, you know, that's going to create some challenges around our schools. So we'd like to have a blanket statement that all planned evening activities, such as the music concerts and things like that, we just need to assess, are some of those in our elementary schools where we have such limited parking, we may not be able to accommodate, and there may be none of those. But we feel pretty certain, at all the middle schools and high schools, they have lots of additional parking, and that we feel like we can accommodate a lot of those evening activities. So we'll be able to go through every school and effectively communicate that, assuming this is approved tonight.
Dr. Garza, if I may just add quickly, typically, our elementary schools do not plan events for the evening of Election Day, just because of what Dr. Garza described. We're going through, just to kind of double-check to make sure our middle and high schools can handle that capacity and have a little more separation from polling places available. But typically, and I just met with the elementary school principals last week, they typically don't have evening activities happening in their buildings, just to avoid that congestion for Election Night.
Okay. Well, since I have heard from high schools, Oakden and Foster, specifically, I do hope. I know it may not be what, it won't help their assessments if that can't be shifted, but the concerts, I am hopeful that we'll be able to have. And I'm wondering, is there a way, because I know most of the emails I've received that asked us not to close. I know we have lost quite a few student days, learning days, because of snow day. Are we able to encourage that work be sent home for that day?
Yes, we can. However, we actually thought about calling this a teacher and student workday, because we know that our teachers work long hours. They do, you know, they work well beyond the school day with regard to grading and lesson planning, and certainly, we know that our teachers are going to use that time wisely. With our students, we hesitated with making a blanket statement that this would be a day for teachers to make assignments, because that's going to require a significant amount of coordination. We don't want to overwhelm students with additional work. Many of our students can use this day to catch up, study, get ready for tests. There's, I mean, as Mr. Press can tell you, they have plenty on their plate to fully utilize the time. So we hated, although there was some great opportunities around literacy and, you know, having really, having our students study and follow the current events that will be occurring that day. There's going to be a lot for them to learn, I think, as we watch this unfold. But we're fearful of saying that there will be any particular assignment, because we didn't want to overwhelm our students with additional work. So I think largely, it would be a student, technically, a student and teacher workday, because I know everyone will have plenty to do on those days.
No, I do. I know it's not an easy decision, but because of the disruption, even if our students aren't in school, and I know we have some schools under construction where it would be very difficult for the teachers and the students to get through the day, get through the lunch period, I am very likely supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. Schurz to be followed by Mr. Darren Kofax and Mrs. Hoff.
So I think it's time that we get a little bit real, and it's, this is a very painful, very, very painful agenda item. It's a painful agenda item because everything that we're talking about here is frustrating, it's frustrating parents, it's frustrating students, it's frustrating teachers, it's frustrating the board of supervisors, it's frustrating the board of elections, and it's frustrating political parties. And what you've heard tonight is that we knew nothing about this until October of this past year, and that it was a request for two-hours delay. And I have a huge transparency problem, and I am, I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed in this board. I'm disappointed in this approach. And I will tell you why I'm disappointed. In October of 2014, Cameron Quinn sent to then-chairman Darren Kofax and the superintendent a letter that the opening paragraph is, "I understand that Fairfax County School Board is currently working on the 2015-16 calendar. Before the calendar gets locked in, I want to be sure everyone is aware of the fact that the 2016 presidential primary is currently scheduled to be held on Tuesday, March 1, 2016." And encourage you all to try to make this one of the days when students are not in school. Because this will be a non-incumbent presidential primary, it is likely to be a large turnout. The good news is, the current law would not also require a June primary in 2016, and it goes on from there. Midnight last night, I got 44 pages of documentation that I had to seek and had to ask about communication between the board of supervisors, the board of elections, the superintendent, and chairman Darren Kofax, the previous chair, and our current chair. And we're not being transparent in this decision. I have been asking for over a month for a detailed conversation by this board on why we weren't closing. There was an 18-page memo from the board of elections to the FCPS board and the superintendent dated January 28 that we got at the end of last week, only after I started asking questions. And I don't like to do this. I've done everything I can behind the scenes to quietly resolve this, to bring this to a forum topic, to reasonably create solutions, and 48 hours ago, all of a sudden, a solution materialized out of Richmond, documentation for which I still have not seen, no one on this board has seen. And why are 44 pages of communications not being transmitted to the rest of the board so that a decision could have been made a long time ago and put this issue to bed, instead of throwing a curveball at parents, teachers, political parties, students, families, et cetera? So I'm very, very disappointed in a strategic governance process that has clearly failed and has no reason for having failed. All it meant was, this board needed to have open, clear, transparent communication about what the operational needs were for our school community and the greater community at large for something that we've known is coming for a very long time and that we had a heads-up on 18 months ago. So I'm in a position where this is something that I've worked very hard to address. I've actually broken down the analytics for the superintendent and for the chair and said, we cannot physically fit the number of people that are required to park in a school building because of the enormity of this election. This isn't a standard election. It isn't a normal primary. We have so many candidates, and what people don't understand is, every single candidate has the right to have three poll watchers per campaign inside every polling location. If there are 10 candidates at... If there are 10 candidates at that point, 30 spots in the parking lot go just to poll watchers. That's before elections officers, before campaign volunteers, before voters, and we were trying to ingress and egress a 90% ballot run by the Electoral Board in Fairfax, hundreds of thousands of people through our schools, while we moved children through the school as an opening and a closing, so twice a day. Children walking to school, biking to school, kiss-and-ride lines, buses, et cetera, on top of all the voters. This is a conversation that needed to be had, not on the last possible day, because I asked lots of questions at the last possible minute, because we weren't getting answers. And this is not the proudest work of this board, this is not the way that we best serve the community. And I probably will wind up abstaining from this, even though it probably needs to be done, because the principle of it is, is that the people in Fairfax County deserve open government. You deserve to know how decision processes, decision-making processes are made. You deserve to have notification in advance, so that we can hear from you, and that we have time to reasonably explain to you the implications and the pros and the cons, and that we do good executive decision-making, and this isn't it. And I'm disappointed in us and the process.
I'm sure they're both, Mr. Darnakofax and Ms. Hines, who will want to respond to that. But let me first have Mr. Darnakofax.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. This situation is not ideal, we will admit that. But I know that Dr. Garza and her team took the guidance that began months ago, when, and she took that into consideration when developing the calendar and when presenting options to us. When we talked about the two-hour delay, that was the main thing, because we realized that there was, there, we realized through safety and security, there was, we didn't, we feel our children will be safe and secure in our schools. We have always been open on primary day, we have never had the option or desire to close. And because we want to keep learning first, that's how we came upon the compromise, because we did hear the concerns, and we believed that that was an adequate adjustment to the school day schedule, because we are a learning environment. Then, with increasing concerns, where we saw the unprecedented voter turnout around our country. We kept hearing more, and there were multiple conversations about parking and traffic, and in the end, will we have what we consider a quality school day? And then, as Ms. Hines talked about, other school systems have also changed their minds for the reasons that she talked about. And then, finally, we realized, well, there, you know, the unfortunate Mother Nature had, has brought us several snow days, which is unfortunate. But the change in interpretation, which was the new finding, that we really, since we don't have to add a day at the end of the year, and we don't have to take away a current holiday, say, Memorial Day or something like that, that has led us here, to where we are right now. And I will be supporting this motion based upon these concerns that have been talked about, but have definitely come to a point where I have changed my opinion as a board member, and feeling that a two-hour delay is no longer sufficient. And since we have the change in interpretation, we can then make this a day off for our students and teachers.
Mrs. Huff to be followed by Mrs. McLachlan.
So, I am concerned that I don't have the information. I'd like to make the decision to vote on this tonight. Although it sounds like there are increasing concerns for logistics of the day, the emails I've received since this became public discussion by our board in the past days have overwhelmingly been the public asking me to vote against closing schools. On the other hand, the Board of Elections has expressed concerns for a while, since before I was on the board, and before I had an opportunity to ask the questions, so. But in the last few days, it has been the superintendent's guidance to close the schools in the best interest of operations of our schools and our community. So, I am inclined to follow that. But to Ms. Palczek's point, I do hear what Dr. Garza was saying about students already having projects, but I wonder if it's possible to separate middle and high school students from elementary schools for enrichment on this day originally planned for learning? I hope my three kids are sleeping and not hearing this.
Well, I've already met with middle school principals, and then we met with high school principals today, and we said, "Assuming this is adopted by the board, use some good judgment." You know, we'd like for students to be utilizing that day, you know, make sure they have books to read, make sure they have work that they can do that day. But I'm hesitant to say, "Assign," you know, "all this work," because a lot of our students already have plenty of work. So, to your point, I think elementary schools, you know, they have a better handle, they're self-contained classrooms. The elementary teachers have a better handle on how, what the workload of the student is. So, I think there clearly could be a distinction between our elementary schools and our secondary schools for that reason. So, I think that's a very good point.
So, and then finally, if the board does decide to close on March 1st, I don't know what our capacity is to work with Board of Elections to intake data for the time of day that voters actually come this March 1st, so that when we're faced with this decision in the future, we will have the best information possible.
I think in the future, as Mr. Press pointed out, we've not had this before. I don't, you know, I don't like to do things twice that are problematic. So, as far as I'm concerned, as long as I'm still your superintendent four years from now, I will be recommending a closure probably on primary day.
I have a Mrs. Huff. Okay, I have a Mrs. McLachlan before I do some go-bags. Mrs. McLachlan.
All right, Dr. Garza and Ms. Kofax, I tried to let you get to speak, but I've been signaled, and I'm afraid I won't get my turn back, so. Couple things. First of all, Dr. Garza, I wanted to echo my, I need Dr. Garza to hear it, so I'll just wait. I want to echo what Ms. Palczek and Ms. Huff and maybe others want to say about enrichment work, because I too have heard that from families in my district. And as you know, Dr. Garza, I continually advocate for reasonable workloads for our students. So, I still hold strong to that. But as we experienced as a school division on the second-quarter guidance to our principals on please be reasonable, fair, judicious, and that was interpreted any number of different ways, I would humbly suggest that what we communicate with our, all of our teachers, whether it's high school, middle school, or elementary, is that any work that they might encourage students to do, it be enrichment work only, it be ungraded. And the goal, in my mind, is twofold. One, if our teachers are looking at the fact that with the snow days we've had, that this is an optimal time for students to, you know, get a chance to review some of the material. Teachers are trying to pick up the pace really fast now, to make up the week and a half we lost of snow instruction. So, this is a great way to encourage students, "Look, to your benefit, we hope you'll use it for review time." That could be at the high school level especially. For middle school students, again, if teachers don't feel like there's any material they're racing to get students up to speed on, I personally, as a parent, think it would be fantastic that all of our social studies classes and/or the English class, because it could be either one, say, "Look, this is a perfect day to do a journal writing, to talk about, what did you observe on, you know, the news coverage of, you know, this primary day? What did you hear in your community, whether it was around the kitchen table, whether it was, you know, online as kids are talking to one another?" I just, I think it'd be a great learning day. But one of the beauties of enrichment work, ungraded work, is it really is the joy of the learning process with no stress, no grades attached. So, I really do request that if, as you spoke very well to the fact that you know and understand the workloads our students have, especially at the high school level, please communicate to all 196-plus principals, anything that's given as enrichment work that day, it must be ungraded, so we're not just piling on the stress for kids and taking away a chance for them to, you know, maybe even enjoy the enrichment work. So, that's my soapbox on that one. A couple of other things, from what the public has weighed in on. I think it's really important that we give as much information to the public as possible. As some may know, but not enough, 241 polling sites exist within Fairfax County. Of those, 167 of those polling sites are in Fairfax County schools, and 125 of them are in elementary schools, which many of us know have very limited parking and facility space. So, when the concerns were raised by both the Fairfax County Board of Elections and the Virginia State Board of Elections, that the turnout numbers for this Super Tuesday primary on March 1st is not a primary. We will be seeing more numbers, they anticipate, than this past November, just a few months ago, for our state and local elections, where we had about 30% voter turnout. They are anticipating we could see upwards of 50% turnout. Given that Fairfax County has a longstanding tradition of closing its schools on the November election days every single year, it is very prudent and wise for our board in light of the data that we've been given, the guidance we've been given by both those electoral boards, as well as our Board of Supervisors and their concern for both the voters and for our students and teachers. This is, I believe, the wise thing to do. I want to remind concerned residents out there that because these are voting sites, we cannot block access the way we normally have security measures in place for voters. And so, it's the volume that we anticipate that will make this so much more challenging. And I would encourage all of my colleagues that, I know we, that some people were thinking about this in terms of, "Well, we don't close on primary days, so we can figure this out." We always close on election days, but it really is about the data. And the data shows that we're looking at larger numbers than any November, when we close without hesitation. So, my position to my colleagues was going to be, if you voted to stay open and wanted to do the two-hour delay, I was going to bring up for you, well then, I question why we close every November except for the presidential years. But I'm pleased that instead, we are looking at what is in the best interest of all Fairfax County residents by making this decision. As noted earlier, we are looking at jurisdictions around the Commonwealth, are some of our very largest ones, all making these decisions now. And to our families, I hope you are hearing that this board and Dr. Garza, we very much regret that this decision could not have come sooner. But I do hope for my colleagues, since we represent an educational system, that this, in my mind, is very much a teachable moment for us. As the chair and vice-chair of our board know, I spoke to both of them over a month ago about this, when our County Board of Elections, Kate Hanley, spoke up again and expressed concern. And there was this feeling of, "Well, we would have to make some changes to the calendar." And my point was, "Well, why aren't we going to the state and asking them to help us with some solutions?" And as it turned out, you know, when we moved into the number of snow days, I reminded both of them that we now didn't need to worry about 180 days. And it concerns me that the initial thinking as a system, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, the initial feelings of system was, "We're really going to be okay, and we really don't need to, you know, close on this day." And as, so I think in fairness and support to Ms. Schultz's comments, I hope the teachable moment is, when some reasonable concerns are being raised by individual board members, we may really need to revisit it sooner rather than later, because we're revisiting it now, 12 days before the primary day. And I know that's not what any of us wanted. But that said, I'm proud of this board, I'm proud of Dr. Garza, because you've been a very supportive voice on this. Once we knew what was the right thing to do, we're taking that action. And if we take our lumps with it, I'd rather do it tonight than to look on March 2nd and realize that we erred. So, you know, I do hope that this board will not only look at this as tonight's decision, but I think Ms. Schultz raises a really important point. We are a board, and we benefit from 12, I believe, very thoughtful and capable minds. And our collective voices and our collective thinking help strengthen the decision-making that rests on Dr. Garza's shoulders. And we didn't have that opportunity to do that until tonight. And I think we need to, again, remember how important it is that decisions like this, sometimes, we should allow them to come back to the board. And to Ms. Schultz's point, this isn't really new. The County Board of Elections, for 18 months, was saying to us that the numbers, the projections, made this not a primary day, it made an election day. And I think that I would like to clear misunderstandings up between the County Board of Elections and our school system, because, as I stated earlier, I think Dr. Garza has the most incredible dedication to this school system. And I don't want anyone perceiving that, that she wasn't very thoughtful and very careful with her team in trying to decide what to do here. So, that's why I think we would benefit from a later date, having this conversation with our County Board of Elections, so that there's a greater understanding from them about why they have communicated to me that we, as a school system, weren't cooperating. And that's, that's, I think, we want to certainly clear that up. I don't want them to be feeling that our system isn't, you know, trying to hear where their concerns are and then act accordingly, because, as has been stated, it sort of felt a little bit like we were in a hot box, where, you know, suddenly, the County Board of Elections was turning to the supervisors to then ask us to revisit the issue, and it's helpful, I think, when we try to all really make sure that people, you know, understand where we're coming from, I guess. So, I know I'm saying a lot, I just think that this is an issue that, you know, we're doing the right thing tonight, but I do hope we have an opportunity to learn from the experience and hopefully have an opportunity to do better, not just on Election Day closings, but frankly, other important issues that really require full board input.
Okay, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 4 screw with the members on the go-back list, starting with Ms. Hines to be followed by Ms. Evans and Mr. Darnakofax and Mrs. Schultz. But since I have not spoken on this one, I'm going to say of yours. The memorandum from County Office of Election and General Registrar dated January 28, 2016, was actually addressed to, not to our chairman, but to superintendent. And it was not copied to any of us at the time. I do not know when you actually, you know, Dr. Garza, received this memo, and you, when you actually forwarded it to, you know, our chairman, because I think it was February 10th, around 11 o'clock at night, all board members were given a copy of this by Chairman Hines. I don't usually go to sleep until very late hours, when I receive this after 11 o'clock. My bad habit, I opened it, I read it, I skimmed through it. There were, there were arguments, you know, made by the Director of the Office of Election and General Registrar. But at this, at certain point, when I got to this particular point, it really puzzled me, because you still talked about one of the political parties requiring affirmation of loyalty, loyalty as a part of this electing, voting process. At that time, I thought that it was no longer required, and this memorandum was still making that argument, that that is why we need to have schools close on that day, because that's going to take a much longer, much longer line, could be a dis, more disruption, et cetera. So, when I saw that, this doesn't make any sense. So, I gave no more credit, not much credit, to that particular memorandum. Then, last week, last week, I think it was Thursday or Friday morning, when I saw one of the forum topic requests, I thought that I need to go back to Mr. Marty Smith, because, you know, Mr. Smith and I had long discussion on interpretation- you know, Mr. Smith and I had long discussion on interpretation of, you know, Virginia Code, Virginia Statute, and also one of the, one particular provision in standards of accreditation. And there was, to be exact, it was the January 20th, and Mr. Smith, at the time told me that, you know, he had received certain interpretation from the, from the Department of Education, where if he closed on, on March 1, we would have to add another student day to our calendar. But he was going to double-check on the next day, guess what? The next day, there was a delay, and then school closings, more closings on the following week. I believe that there were phone texts between Mr. Smith and Department of Education. And finally, it was very late on Friday, we got some clarification, which wasn't enough for me at the time, because for me, it was a partial clarification. I needed a further clarification on standards of accreditation, and I got that, I only got that Tuesday morning, Tuesday morning. I mean, along the way, I copied my emails to the chairman to just comprise her of what, you know, I've been working on, to be exactly on what the interpretation of the statute and administrative codes are. So if we didn't get the reversed, different interpretation of those sections of the code, administrative code, I would not be able to support, would not be able to support, you know, closing on, on, on March 1. But with the new interpretation, I can finally, at least not to my 100% satisfaction, but at this point, you know, I can support in closing the school on March 1. Just wanted to give the facts out to my fellow colleagues, because I have not had a chance to talk to every one of you. Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Yeah, that information did come very recently, and we didn't get confirmation from the supervisor of the person that Mr. Smith talked to on Friday. We wanted to make sure that we got confirmation, you know, before we relied on it, and that didn't come until Tuesday, so. But we, we didn't. Thank you, Mr. Moon and Mr. Smith, for getting, setting that in motion, because it clearly is very important, new information. And, which is why I immediately got on the phone and talked to every school board member, and let them know that this is a change that might make a difference to them. So anyway, I'll just say a couple of things. One reflection that I take away from this is that, but we might want to talk to the Office of Elections about moving some of the polls out of schools. I mean, I know that, like, Dogwood Elementary in Reston is a polling place, and 300 yards down the road, there's a community, a county community center, and so I'm kind of wondering, maybe there are some other public buildings that we could use instead. So maybe, going forward, lessons learned. I, I will say just one thing, that I, in, I have, in my experience of this, and in looking back, I, there has not been a steady drumbeat from the County Office of Elections that we should close schools on this day. And in fact, in October, just this past October, Kate Hanley, who's Secretary of the Fairfax County Electoral Board, who came to me in late summer and said, you know, I'm worried about primary day, I think we should do something. Secretary Hanley actually came right here to this room and testified in favor of a two-hour delay, and then thanked us for putting, instituting a two-hour delay. And we did not hear, as, as a board, we did not hear again from Secretary Hanley. In fact, the next thing that I heard was, in January, the Board of Supervisors had decided to do a board matter without telling anyone on the school board that they were going to do that. I don't really want to rehash all of that, because it was not pleasant, and I think communication could have been a lot better. But the, you know, I, I think that we do have new information now, and I would like us to just kind of move forward on this. And I, I do want to say, because other people have mentioned it, that I appreciate the work of staff, particularly facilities and the school-based administrators, because I know, just from watching over the last few weeks, how, how hard they work with the Office of Elections to try to make this work every year, and they were really, you know, doing backflips and jumping through hoops to try to make this work for everybody. And so I hope that if the board supports this tonight, we will at least have one group of people whose lives will be easier after this, so.
Dr. Garza?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Moon. You know, first of all, I want to say that, you know, I'm sorry that this is so late. I wish it weren't this late. But it's kind of one of those things, it is, kind of is what it is. You know, the easiest thing for us to do is nothing, but as new information became available, you know, I felt we had to act. I will appreciate, Ms. Schultz has been in communication with me over the last, I don't know, several weeks. I know Mr. Moon has been continuing to talk about it, as has the Board Chair and Vice And I will also say, we've, I think, despite what might be alluded to here, I think that we have been responsive to the Board of Elections, we've met with them periodically. I think we've tried to be responsive to the information they had available to them at the time. They've always wanted us not to be open on primary days, because it is always more convenient for us to have our schools open without concern for parking and all those issues. But we've kind of just made it work, and that's a credit to the Board Election staff and our team, who've worked very, very hard to make sure that parking is designated. It's not the easiest day in the world, I will admit. But I, I feel like we've negotiated and partnered with them as best we could. Yeah, it was a surprise to us to learn in January that there were continued concerns. Certainly, they had expressed concern about it being a primary, but I don't think that they knew, you know, if we had, in, in fall of 2014, closed school on primary day, I guess our crystal ball would be better than many school systems across the Commonwealth, because most schools at that time were having school and adopted a calendar with March 1st primary day. I know there are at least 15 school systems right now that are changing that day and closing on, on March the 1st. I think there's some more to come. We were hopeful that we could have and would be able to conduct school during the presidential primary, as we have for many years. And I think, particularly in light of the fact that we've had so many snow days, this has been a very difficult decision. We do now see in some of the documentation that we've received, I think, I received the letter on, on February the 2nd, there's hundreds of thousands of people that they're expecting now to show up and vote in our schools and throughout the county, hundreds of thousands. I don't want to say what the number is, because it is just a guess, but it's significant. And when we have schools that only have very limited parking, we're very concerned about our ability, our school's ability, to conduct school effectively, particularly as we contemplate buses in and out, our staff trying to get in and out of schools. It's just, I think it, you know, would be extraordinarily difficult, not only for our schools to operate effectively, but also for the voters throughout this county to avail themselves of the opportunity to vote. I, you know, I want to extend to our parents and employees, we did send an email out that went, once this was posted, just to inform our community that this was under consideration, because it was a departure from what we had been communicating, and I recognize that that's a challenge. I did receive, I've received about 17 emails from parents and families about it, you know, read every one of them, I understand their perspective. But I also want to acknowledge that many of our families, I think, understand and appreciate that this is something unique and different, people that are following this election. This is a very unique and different experience than I think we've ever experienced before. And certainly, I think what brought home to us, and in our conversations with Cameron and others at the Board of Elections, is the turnout that we're seeing, we have seen and observed, you know, across the country, New Hampshire and Iowa. So in light of all that, while it's late notice, and we're certainly, you know, sorry that this is, creates some inconvenience for our parents and for our employees and staff, certainly, we're always mindful of when a student misses a day of school, they're missing the opportunity to learn. So that's, that's something that always, we always take to heart, that we feel like in light of the turnout that's expected, the historic turnout that has not been anticipated until just this past January. If anyone says they knew this was going to be the turnout in October, I probably need to, need, need to get a, a look at their crystal ball, because I don't think anyone, even the Elections Office, anticipated this kind of number. So I think there are some, as I think Ms. Corbett Sanders outlined very well, there have been some new developments in just the recent weeks. And so anyway, I appreciate the board's consideration, I regret that it's so late, and, but I feel like it's the, the best thing to do for our schools and for our community and for the voters in the county. Thank you.
Ms. Evans, to be followed by Ms. Elena Kofax.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moon. I, I am supporting this change, but I, I will admit, I'm doing so reluctantly. I think Ms. Hines and Dr. Garza have outlined very well what has changed just in the last few weeks to make us consider making this change and closing on primary day, rather than having a two-hour delay. I made the motion in October for the two-hour delay, and we approved that unanimously. The only testimony we received that night was from the Board of Elections supporting that delay. They did not say we were making a big mistake by not closing schools, they simply didn't, and that was in October. I had not heard directly from the Board of Elections myself, then or now, but that's all right. We, we have heard indirectly from them. And they are warning us of an extraordinary, unprecedented turnout, that is the only thing that would make us take this extraordinary and unprecedented action. My instinct, frankly, was to stick with the two-hour delay. We had put a lot of time and effort into our plan for each and every school, and staff did a tremendous job working with principals and working with facilities to make sure that the students were going to be safe and secure, making sure that there was adequate access. We delayed so that, that the prime time for voting would be covered, where there would not be teachers nor students at the, the school during those early morning hours and, and after-school hours. We wouldn't have had students or teachers there, and I was hoping that that would be adequate. But the memo that was sent to the school system and received in, in early February was in response to what has changed, what has changed that would make the Board of Elections say we, we should change our mind and, and close schools. As Mr. Moon alluded to, one of the things referenced was the Republican loyalty oath or affiliation oath, which, by the time we received that memo, had been discarded. So that was no longer an issue for us, but there were other things in, in the memo talking about the numbers of voters that are going to be expected. So I will be interested to see if, if the numbers we've been given match the, the actual Perhaps they will, we, we are seeing a large turnout in other parts of the country, certainly. But I do worry about the loss of instruction time. I worry about the disruption to families. I do think that we had an excellent plan in each and every school. But again, we are being warned very strongly that, that this could be disastrous, if not, not in the safety of children, so much as in parking and traffic. So, so we're going to take this action, I, I will support it, but I, I do believe that we are taking it because circumstances have changed, we have been given new information, we have been given new guidance by the State Department of Education. And so, and all of this has happened within the last couple of weeks, within a month of the primary itself. So with that, I will support the motion.
Ms. Elena Kofax.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I was just wanting to speak to Ms. Huff, when she talked about, could you check to see when voter turnout was highest? That, the reason the two-hour delay was there, was that was when we were told the voter turnout was highest typically. And so that, that was the, you know, origination of, that, the rationale for making certain that we had that two-hour delay, and then we felt. And, and I don't think, Ms. Evans, I don't think you could have said it better, it's, we're all doing this reluctantly, but given the new information that's been brought forth to us, and we think it's the, the better solution. And Dr. Garza, as you said, it would be great if we could have a crystal ball and have seen this, but we, we didn't, and we have tipped, we've never done this before, but, you know, the, on the upside, it's good that the public is engaged.
Ms. Shores.
So I had hoped for a slightly different turn in the conversation, and for some reason, you know, if, when I'm parenting four boys, if somebody makes a mistake, the most important part that I want to hear out of my boys' mouths are that I made the mistake and to own it. And I, I heard a lot of language up here, and I'm looking at these documents, and October 22 of 2014, March 16 of 2015, August 3 of 2015, August 10 of 2015, we would like FCPS to consider closing. We're very concerned about the status of the schools on the presidential primary. I have been asked, the current chairman, I have been asked for us to consider closing FCPS schools. On August 3, we had lots of time to have this conversation. This board has never once, the 12 of us, had a conversation about closing on primary day, because this information wasn't provided to us. We had our last board meeting on February 4, and an 18-page memo about the status from the Board of Elections, that to me was a gigantic red warning flag, was dated January 28 and came in on February 22, or February 2. We, we were all here two weeks ago. We had this information, and we had plenty of opportunity to act, but we did not converse as a board. And this board only works as a unit when the 12 of us, in concert with the superintendent, take information in and make executive decisions based on the operational impact to the system. This has nothing to do with the Republican loyalty oath that just recently came up. That had nothing to do with it 18 months ago, it had nothing to do with it last March, and it had nothing to do with it last summer. And there is a substantial amount of documentation that shows that we were asked repeatedly to close. And I think that the final request from Ms. Hanley for us to get two hours was the, the final shot over the bow. We've, we've heard a lot here about recent new information from the, either the Secretary of Education or the Department of Education. I don't have anything that shows that the guidance has changed. I would assume that if, something that has been a standing practice of this board, by which we made master calendar policy decisions year after year, that guided the entire building of the master calendar, and how we built the number of days and the number of hours, if that guidance changed, I would expect a, a major written document out of the Secretary of Education or the Department of Education to be provided to the entire board and to the public, that shows that we now have a different policy or a different procedure guiding us. I have nothing to that effect. And all this is, is about open government and the conduct of the business of the people. This is your school system, this is your money, these are your schools, these are your children, and it's your government. And we're accountable. And we can try to make excuses, but the bottom line is, is 18 months ago, 12 months ago, six months ago, this information was known, and frankly, the last time we were here, two weeks ago, and we've had another holiday in between, we had President's Day. That's another day that we could have added back to the calendar. There were so many options available, rather than taking another day from the academic classroom and the student achievement of our kids, and throwing families into a, a bit of a tizzy just weeks out. So I would like a copy of, I'm going to say publicly, I'd like a copy of whatever we have from the Secretary of Education in writing that says that we're allowed to do this. And two, we have an outstanding issue from the last bipartisan election commission. The final report was from 2014, and I'll say it now, for this coming November, they have asked us not to hold teacher conference, parent-teacher conferences on election day this coming November, for the exact same reasons, about traffic congestion, interaction of people in parking lots, and moving people in and out. So I want to put that on our radar now, as we develop our next calendar. But the biggest thing is, is that if we've made a mistake, I'd like us to own it. thing is, is that if we've made a mistake, I'd like us to own it. Just plain, clear language, simply saying, you know what, we probably should have had our day closed, and we should have done it earlier, and this information should have been provided to the full board, and we should have been in possession of all operational communications from the Board of Supervisors and the Board of Elections, which affected the operational calendar of this school system so that we could collectively as a board have a discussion on the merits of the issue and make the best decision for the school system, its budget, and its families.
Madam Chair, I call the question. Mr. Chair, sorry.
Question has been called. All those, is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor of calling the question, raise your hand. Darnakofax, Mr. McElveen, Mrs. Strauss, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Evans, Ms. Hines, Moon, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Palczek, those opposing, Mrs. McLachlan, and Mrs. Huff. The motion to call the question passes 10 to 2. The motion has been called. Now, we need to vote on the motion on the table, which is that school board will approve the proposed calendar change by creating a teacher and student holiday on March 1, 2006. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Darnakofax, McElveen, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, Wilson, McLachlan, Palczek, those opposing. Abstaining is Ms. Schultz, the motion passes. Thank you. Now I return the paper back to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Good job. Item 3.05, confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. We have three actions tonight. I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to expel a student who assaulted students and caused a disruption at school and who also was charged with and convicted of a serious criminal offense related to an alleged community-based incident.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Okay. Second, I call on Ms. Strauss again for a motion.
Thank you. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who sold illegal drugs to other students at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Evans. All those in favor? Okay. Darnakofax, McElveen, Huff, Strauss, Evans, Hines, Moon, Wilson, Schultz, those opposed, and those abstaining. Corbett Sanders, McLachlan, and Palczek. Okay? The motion carries. Third, I call on Ms. Darnakofax for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who assaulted and threatened a teacher at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the Division Superintendent.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Huff. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Darnakofax, McElveen, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, Wilson, Schultz, and Palczek, those opposed, and those abstaining. Ms. McLachlan, the motion carries. Thank you. Item four on the agenda, the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 4.01, committee appointments. Appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 4.02, award a contract for the Stratford Landing Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, RJ Crowley, Inc., in the amount of $16,515,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.03, award a contract for the Robinson Secondary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Interstate Corp., in the amount of $1,100,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 4.04, monthly report on employee separations. Confirm the separations for the period beginning January 1, 2016, and ending January 31, 2016 as detailed in the agenda item. Item five on our agenda, new business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. I will now read all five new business items and then turn the microphone to Dr. Garza, who will introduce the FY '16 third-quarter budget review presentation. Item 5.01, FY '16 third-quarter budget review. Approve revenue and expenditure adjustments as reflected in the FY 2016 third-quarter budget review and as detailed in the agenda item. Item 5.02, award a contract for the Bailey's Upper Elementary School Phase 2 project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.03, award a contract for Kings Park Elementary School Roof Replacement Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.04, award a contract for the Forestville Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.05, authorize the Division Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to take all actions necessary and appropriate in consultation with legal counsel for the school division to pursue approval of proffered condition amendment application number PCA 89-d-007, including negotiating, signing, and submitting the final proffer statement and any other documents on behalf of the school board. I call on Dr. Garza for the introduction of the budget review presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, this is our annual third quarter. We recognize monies that were budgeted because the budget's a projection based upon educated guess, but where expenditures are not aligning with the budget, we recognize those savings at third quarter. Sometimes we do it throughout the year, but third quarter is kind of the big, big time for us to do that. I do want to also point out, we do have a work session scheduled to discuss this more thoroughly, so there will be opportunity for more in-depth questions at the upcoming work session. I think probably that's enough said because Kristin is prepared to walk you through kind of where we are with the third quarter, what kind of monies we have available to recognize, and then what are the options available to the board for the utilization of those expenditures, those dollars. So I'll turn it back over to you, Kristin.
Thank you so much. The third-quarter budget review offers us an opportunity to revise the budget based on current trends and/or new requirements. Once our third-quarter budget review is approved by the school board, it is forwarded to the county for their inclusion in their third-quarter budget review. So in order to coordinate the timeframe for our third-quarter budget review with the counties, the analysis in this is based on approximately six months of activities for this year. So beginning on page one for the school operating fund, in terms of revenue, item A recommends an increase in sales tax revenue totaling $3 million, or approximately 1.6% higher than we had projected for this year, based on sales tax revenue received to date. While sales tax revenue for the first six months of this fiscal year has trended above our projections, we are cautious about moving forward, and will continue to monitor sales tax for the remainder of this fiscal year. For example, the state recently released information projecting that sales tax revenue is projected to remain level, so any variance from our projection will be included in the FY '16 final budget review in July. Item B, our grant adjustments. The first is our annual adjustment for the National Board Certified Teacher Stipends. Each year, the state provides pass-through funding to FCPS for teachers who are eligible for the state's National Board Certified Teacher Stipend. Based on the actual number of teachers receiving that stipend as compared to the state's projection, FCPS will see a decrease in revenue as well as the related expenditures totaling $127,500. Second is our annual adjustment to IDEA funding. Because FCPS's fiscal year and the government's fiscal year are based on different dates, FCPS projects each year what our grant award for IDEA will be, and then after the federal government releases the final award amounts, we adjust our budget during a quarterly budget review. The adjustment to IDEA results in a reduction in revenue and related expenditures of $59,358. So as a result of these revenue adjustments, the net total revenue increase is $2.8 million. So moving on to operating expenses, in the operating fund on page two, after we have our adjustments for National Board Certified Teacher and IDEA grants, we start with item B. In item B, the staffing reserve, we're returning all of the available positions and the funding that's remaining in the staffing reserve. In total, one-time funding of $7 million results from positions that were not allocated this school year. So the staffing reserve is used to account each year to address staffing resource requirements as we compare our actual and projected enrollment, to meet special education and unique needs, and to address large class sizes. Positions are allocated both from the reserve to schools, and positions are also returned from schools to the staffing reserve when enrollment doesn't meet our projections. To mitigate disruptions for schools, those elementary schools where the actual enrollment was within five students from qualifying for another position were able to retain that position to meet potential growth throughout the school year. So we started the staffing reserve this year with 283 positions, which are a combination of teacher and instructional assistants, and the value of those positions was $19 million. In summary, FCPS allocated staffing to schools based on the projections in the approved budget. In total, 157 positions were returned to the reserve from schools where their actual enrollment was lower than projected. A total of 179 positions were allocated to schools where enrollment was higher than projected, 83 positions were allocated to address special education and unique needs, and 126 positions were allocated to address class size. So just a reminder, the use of reserve positions varies each year depending on the variance between our projected and our actual enrollment. So for example, in FY '15, all of the positions in the staffing reserve were allocated, so none were returned at third quarter. In item C, based on actual fuel prices paid to date and projecting those rates for the remainder of this fiscal year, we're recognizing savings of $3 million in vehicle fuel. Like at the county, FCPS has benefited from historically low fuel rates. Item D reflects additional funding that's required as a result of the historical snowfall this year. FCPS budgets a minimal amount for snow removal each year because significant snowfall really occurs infrequently. The last time snowfall of this magnitude occurred was 2010. So for this year, while we haven't received all of the invoices yet, we're projecting total expenditures of $7 million for contracted snow plowing, snow hauling, snow removal, as well as overtime costs for custodial staff. Any variance between this projected amount and the actual amount when all the invoices have been received will be included in the final budget review at year end. The county and FCPS are participating with FEMA, who's working with the Commonwealth to petition the president for a declaration of an emergency. If that is granted, FCPS will apply for any potential federal reimbursements that are available, and then any revenue would be recognized at a future budget review. Just as a reminder, without the available funding that occurred this year from the staffing reserve, typically we would allocate funding from the school board's flexibility reserve for unforeseen expenditures such as the snow. The school board flexibility reserve is committed each year just for these unforeseen circumstances. Lastly, item E is one-time instructional material funding for the second school being built at Fort Belvoir. Since startup costs for schools are one-time, we've historically included these at a quarterly budget review. Funding of $0.5 million is recommended for library materials, textbooks, and other instructional items. So the net expenditure adjustment is a decrease of $2.5 million. On page three, in summary, after accounting for both the revenue and expenditure variances, the total available funding is $5.3 million. This funding is recommended to be left available for the school board's consideration as part of the FY '16 final budget review. This will provide flexibility for the board as you address critical one-time funding requirements as well as FCPS's beginning balance requirements for FY '18. As we considered possible one-time uses of funding for third quarter, based on the fiscal challenges that we're projecting for both FY '17 and FY '18, we felt the best option was to defer the consideration of any one-time needs until year end in July. This will allow you to consider and prioritize all of the one-time needs, including equipment, major maintenance, textbook adoption, and strategic plan investments with the beginning balance needs at year end. Just as a reminder, the FY '17 advertised budget includes $27.8 million in one-time funding, so FCPS will need $27.8 million to not have a shortfall in beginning balance revenue in FY '18. Looking to the long term, we will continue to reduce the amount of one-time funding used to balance the budget. We're hopeful that in future years, the decrease in beginning balance can be addressed with increased revenue. The county has been able to use recurring revenue to eliminate their structural deficit. In the county executive's advertised budget presentation this week, he did note that the county has made significant progress through the elimination of one-time funding for recurring expenses, adopting policies that strengthen the county's pension system, doubling of their reserve policies, and their recognition that investments are necessary to keep Fairfax strong. So lastly, looking at our other funds that start at the top of page four. For school construction, FCPS is including appropriation authority for multi-year projects based on the bond items that were previously approved by the voters. Those annual appropriations are made to cover the total value of multi-year contracts, regardless of the years in which the actual payments are made to contractors, and these projects are typically loaded as part of the third-quarter budget review. So the list of the projects being appropriated at this time were approved by the voters as part of the 2013 and 2015 bond referenda, and they're listed here on the agenda. In the Food Nutrition Services Fund, we're adjusting revenue downward by $3.3 million due to the school closures for inclement weather. That loss of revenue is offset by savings from food costs, reduced food costs, as well as compensation. In the ACE and Grants and Self-Supporting Fund, we're recognizing changes in grant revenue and the corresponding expenditures. So thank you for the opportunity tonight to present the FY '16 third-quarter budget review. We do have a work session scheduled for February 25.
Thank you very much, Ms. Michael. So as you said, we do have a work session scheduled for February 25, and we'll have plenty of time to talk about this. If there are any clarifying questions, or Mr. Moon?
Just one question.
Sure.
The staffing reserve, we have about, how much is being put back?
$7 million is being returned.
We don't consider that as a recurring revenue, do we?
We do not. So next year, we'll again begin the beginning of the school year with all of the positions in the staffing reserve, and then depending on if they're needed to meet those variances and projected versus actual enrollment, class size, or other special education and unique needs, we'll begin to allocate them out again.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Michael.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you again in a few days. All right. Next on the agenda, item 6.01, superintendent matters. I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I think we were all very saddened to learn about the passing of one of our strongest advocates here in FCPS, Dr. Charlie Dane, who is a very familiar face in our school system. He followed the business of the system very closely, and he often let us know his thoughts and perspectives about how we can improve upon an idea or think differently. Charlie was always active in the community and worked closely with the Fairfax County Federation of Citizens as their education committee chair, and he was involved in so much of our work, just such an ardent advocate for our children and our schools. I want to thank his family, certainly want to extend to them our deepest condolences for their loss, but I also want to thank them for his longtime service to FCPS. We will miss his wisdom and his generous spirit. I was also saddened to hear, I think we all were, about the passing of the husband of former school board member Tina Hohn Dusan Vachanovic, I knew I was going to mispronounce his last name, who passed away earlier this month. I know that Tina and her family are struggling through that loss, and Tina is a former board member and leader in this community and just a wonderful friend to FCPS. Again, our thoughts and prayers go out to both Tina and their entire family. I want to thank all the parents, students, and school staff that came out on Tuesday evening to the Government Center for the rally just evening to the Government Center for the rally to support our schools. It is only through your ongoing support that we have any chance of getting the funding that's so desperately needed for our schools. We were so disappointed with the budget released by the county executive that only included the 3% transfer to the schools, which would leave us with nearly a $69 million deficit. And for individuals in the community, that is a very, very difficult challenge. And I would encourage anyone that wants to see how difficult that would be to get to 69 million, to go to our budget website and go through the budget online tool. However, I can't help but continue to remain hopeful that our funding partners of both the county and the state will fully fund our budget and invest in our schools and end the nearly decade-long practice of balancing the budget with cuts. Sorry that I couldn't attend Tuesday evening. There's only one thing that could have kept me away, and that was a winter storm. I was on the west coast, and they would not let us fly back. So Mr. McAlveen suggested I should have gotten a car and driven back. That reminded him of the Lubbock story, I know. I also want to thank the families that came out last night to our information session, or otherwise known as our listening tours. We don't call them listening tours anymore because I don't say tours correctly, so we call them information sessions at Annandale High School. I remain so impressed with our engaged community and their thoughtful exchange and dialogue and interest in the work that's going on. We'll have another one on Tuesday night at South County High School at 6:30, and another one on Monday, February 29th, at Centerville High School. We welcome and encourage our community to come out and be a part of that. And again, I want to acknowledge our outstanding employees who are very appropriately recognized this evening, and those were wonderful social workers who provide just outstanding support to children and families, such an essential part of the work that goes on. And then our athletic trainers, who also help take care of our student athletes and make sure that they're healthy and well. So we congratulate and thank them for their hard work on the part of our students. Thank you. That ends my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Item 7.01, Board Committee Reports. Next on the agenda is Board Reports. I call on Mr. Moon for a report on the February 8th work session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a full-day work session on February 8th. There were four major topics. The first one was a presentation of second part of Strategic Plan Goal One, Student Success Report, dealing with strategies three and four. And the board earlier this evening voted to accept the report presented in both December of the last year and January this year. And the second topic was a program evaluation on English language learner study. This was the year one report of a two-year study by the Office of Program Evaluation, and the report provided a description of English language learner population growth over the past decade, and also an analysis of the design services for English language learner students. And the third topic dealt with another calendar issue. This one was pre-Label Day start for 2016 and 2017. Board decided for the next school year not to make any change to already adopted calendar, but continue exploring, starting the school year before the Label Day from 2017 and 2018 school year. The last and final topic was a compensation study. The board received from the consultant hired by us, a report on the state of our non-teacher categories of employees. The study report for teachers, as you recall, was done in December of last year. The school board will continue to discussion of the employee compensation issues for many more months so that we could find ways to recruit and retain excellent teachers and other employees to work for us. Thank you.
Thank you. I call on Ms. Evans for a report on tonight's forum.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We decided to explore new ways for the school board to honor student achievement, and we asked the Governance Committee to take on that task and bring us some recommendations. Secondly, we did agree to start community engagement on the question of whether Stewart High School should be renamed, and if so, what the new name should be. And thirdly, we started our conversation on the closing of school on primary day with some other alternatives presented.
Thank you. Next is 8.01, Board Matters. I call on Ms. Palchik to start us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, just want to reiterate my thanks to all the advocates who came out to support our schools. We have parents, non-parents, community members who are very concerned and are working with us. On that, I also want to thank our delegates, representatives, and Richmond, who were kind enough to meet with me while I was down there for VSBA conference to talk about school funding and the needs that are there from the state side. Looking forward, I'm very excited to get back to visiting schools now that hopefully snow will not be visiting us this next couple of weeks. So, I didn't say it. So next week, I think I have Shrewood Elementary School, then I'll be going to Madison High School, Fairfax High School, Oakton High School, Marshall High School, and Woodson High School. So excited to get back into the schools. I will also be participating at a budget meeting, I believe Monday night, Providence Elementary School, and very excited that I'll be holding my very first office hours, and hope you will join me Saturday, March 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Panera and Mosaic. And my very first News You Choose newsletter went out. If you would like to receive it, you can sign up at the News You Choose website.
Thank you. Mrs. Schultz?
So I want to thank the parents of kind of crossed jurisdictions, but it went up to the Langley Pyramid to Forestville Elementary, and did a presentation with what I was shocked was a huge turnout on Tuesday. I think the kids had been home, and everybody was dying to get out. But come and talk to a number of people about digital citizenship, social media, college applications, and student stress and student achievement, and what that means for students in the pipeline as they start looking at college, and the importance of parents becoming aware. And it was such a wonderful group, and I thank everybody for coming out from all around the county up there. Also, I want to offer my condolences to Ms. Hohn. I know a number of us will be at the funeral this weekend for her husband. I too have upcoming office hours, and I thank Ms. Palchik for saying it so that I would remember to advertise mine as well. On Saturday, February 27th, from 11:30 to 1:00 at the Burke Center Library. And also Saturday, March 5th, at the Springfield Government Center from 10:00 to noon. So the message will go out about that, reminding people, but I want to make sure that people knew. And I'm sorry that Mr. Press left. Once again, I spent a day at the student representative elections, and I feel like every year, it just gets better. I'm more impressed with the young people who come out. It's a very difficult process, but I think it's maybe, you know, we should redo the presidential process because they did their caucus, they did their primary elections, and they did their election, all in like a couple of hours. And wouldn't that be nice? But look very much forward to welcoming Laura as our new representative, and welcoming all those other students to stay involved as a part of the process. And finally, I went to the regional wrestling tournament, and I have to say, students from throughout FCPS, the young men from Oakton, the young men from South Lakes, the young men from certainly Robinson, Westfield, I've never seen such an incredible display of not only talent, but really good sportsmanship. And it makes me proud of the young men that are in FCPS, that even when they lose, or cheering on their colleagues, their peer athletes. Just what a tremendous example they show as student athletes, and are just wonderful examples of FCPS. So congratulations to all of those who won and placed at the regionals, and I look forward to attending more of those events in the future.
Ms. McLaughlin?
First of all, I just wanted to convey my appreciation to Woodson High School and the choral director, the esteemed Michael Erlich. For anyone who follows performing arts in our county, he's a legend at Woodson. And the dessert on Broadway that he does every year is particularly special because it's an opportunity where school-wide students can audition and automatically be given an opportunity to perform. And it was amazing to see so many young men and women perform these Broadway show tunes and really demonstrate their passion and love of singing. And so as the mother of student athletes, it was really great to take in an amazing fine arts production. And then also, Mr. Moon and I attended a Chinese New Year celebration at Lake Braddock Secondary School, and that was my first time really sitting through an entire performance and celebration. And it was just amazing to see the students ranging in age from, you know, pre-K all the way up through high school, and their passion and their joy of celebrating their culture and bringing in the year. It was really a lot of fun, and I very much enjoyed that. And I also wanted to do a special shout-out, because she's still here this evening, but to Dr. Jane Lipp, and I hope you'll pass along to your colleague, Fabio Zulawaga, our Assistant Superintendent. Both of you have been truly remarkable in reflecting and exhibiting Dr. Garza's number-one goal for our school system, which is to create a caring and responsive culture. And I so appreciate the support that you've been giving to some constituents in my district. I know it not only means a lot to them, but it especially means a lot to me. And it's a joy to be able to work with you all, and I just thank you for your dedication. And I do want to also echo the sympathies that are being shared tonight. First, to a remarkable mentor to me, Ms. Tina Hohn, former school board member. She's been a dear friend for many, many years, and I'm so sorry about her loss. And also to Dr. Charlie Dane, who Braddock District resident, been involved in the schools longer than even I, and just incredible wealth of knowledge and information. I so enjoyed his many helpful emails and, you know, input and guidance. He left a lasting mark on the school system for all that he gave to it, and he will be truly missed by many of us in the community. And so my thoughts and prayers for the Dane family as well. And with that, to my colleagues, I look forward to all of us, you know, continuing to really work together on this budget issue in echoing Dr. Garza's remarks. I think it is without question that we, as a board, have to be relentless in helping our funding colleagues and the board supervisors understand what equity means, and what we hope they will continue to honor the longstanding tradition in Fairfax County schools, which is that in order to have strong schools, you have to fund them with the same level of commitment that you do other county services. And the proposed budget by the county executive does not reflect that long tradition. And so I really hope that as we work through what, without question, are very challenging economic times for this county, but there has to be a firm commitment that we are one county, and therefore the funding needs to reflect both the value of your schools as well as any other county services that we're fortunate to have here in Fairfax.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to echo Ms. McLaughlin's comments regarding the budget, because I think we do have some hard work in front of us. But I'm hopeful that we can make progress both with the board supervisors and internally to get through this difficult time as best, the best way possible for our kids and the schools. I only have one announcement for the Sully District. We are going to have a budget, a public budget meeting at Rocky Run Middle School on March 7th. It'll be a joint meeting with myself and Kathy Smith, the supervisor for the Sully District. And I've also invited Ms. Huff to join us, and I hope she can join us as well. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Wilson, the other two large board members, are they also welcome? We'll just show up.
You're welcome to request an invitation, and I'll consult with the supervisor.
Ah, just to show up. For the last couple of days, I was happy to, you know, happy to participate, happy to attend three different graduations already, two alternative high schools, Mountain View and Pryon Alternative High Schools, and also other to high school completion, other to high school at Woodson High School. If, you know, if there is any board member who has not been to one of these alternative high school, other types of graduations, I'd like to strongly encourage for you to go to as many of them as possible, because they are, you will see, non-traditional, you know, students eager to continue, pursue their education. We had a gentleman whose education was interrupted after sixth grade, and many years have elapsed, but wanted to, you know, wanted to get back to his education because he knew he needed it, and coming back and how he was able to, you know, get his high school degree. And also, you know, we have a mothers who are raising their families, you know, somehow for different reasons, they had to, you know, stop, they had to discontinue their former education in the past, but wanted to come back and continue it and get high school, high school diplomas, and et cetera. And when you attend those graduations, it really gives me a true pleasure of being a school board member, to be able to support programs like that in Fairfax County.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I also was very pleased to attend the election of the new student school board rep. The students who participated in that and campaigned were just so very impressive. So I want to thank all of those that participated and welcome our new student rep. I look forward to talking with her between now and the time that she takes over from Mr. Press. I also want to thank those that organized the rally at the Government Center the other night. It was a very impressive event, and it took, I know, a lot of organizing as well as the students. There were quite a few student performers that night, and they were absolutely excellent, showcasing all the, a lot of the talent that our students have. So I think that the board of supervisors could hear us out there, and a couple of them came out and spoke with us. And I too look forward to continuing to work with them and helping them understand our true needs. And lastly, I want to thank Dr. Garza for her listening tour, information session, whatever we're calling it now, for Region Two. It was great to have folks turn out at Annandale High School the other day, and I think there was good interaction, and I appreciate Dr. Garza's going out in the community and listening.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I would like to echo the comments made about the student elections. It was an incredible day, and certainly I was very impressed with all of the candidates. I've had the opportunity of working with Laura since September on the Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee, and I know that she will serve this board well as the representative for all students. I also want to echo Mr. Moon's comments about the high school graduations this week. They truly epitomized what we talk about, about knowing each child by name and need. And by knowing each child by name and need, we saw 100 young people reach their, reach a milestone in achieving their potential by being able to graduate from high school. And so heartfelt congratulations to all of them. I did not have the opportunity to speak to each one individually, but I am very proud to say that you are a Fairfax to say that you are a Fairfax County public school alumni, actually from a building that I went to school in. So, that was good. Additionally, I want to thank the Fort Hunt Sportsman, the West Potomac Athletic Boosters, and the West Potomac PTA for all of their hard work in putting on the Valentine's Day Dance this past weekend, which helped the school raise money towards an outdoor classroom. Excellent work and I know you're on the way to achieving that goal. Going forward, I do want to first thank the principals that have welcomed me into their schools and the teachers that have welcomed us into their classrooms, including Riverside Elementary, Bellevue Elementary, and Lee High School, as well as West Potomac in working on their advanced ed accreditation this past week. And looking to the future, I will be at South County, meeting with staff and teachers on Friday and then again on Tuesday night. We look forward to the listening tour. And next week, I will be at Dan Stork's Town Hall meeting where we will be talking about budget. Any at-larges are welcome to attend, I'm sure. It'll be February 27th in the morning. And I will be meeting on the 23rd with the Stratford Landing and Fort Hunt communities. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. First, I want to extend our deepest sympathy to the Scalia family and the passing of Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia. Justice Scalia was a very generous man. He lived in my community. All of his children attended Fairfax County Public Schools and his grandchildren now attend our schools. Justice Scalia was a speaker at several Langley High School graduations. And he came and spoke several times to some of the other schools in my community. And some of his children are PTA leaders now in some of my schools. The Case Day Program at Langley High School, which is a full-day event, which by the way is tomorrow, where students actually argue a Supreme Court case that will be before the Supreme Court now. It was really through the support and access to the Supreme Court as a result of Justice Scalia's generosity that this program started 20 years ago and has been so successful and so strong these past years. It is probably one of the most amazing things that the AP Government students and all of these students at Langley High School participate in and they argue cases and it is just amazing. And so, we are very, very grateful to Justice Scalia for his support in this program. I know these are difficult days for his family and especially for Maureen, his wonderful John Faust is going to have a budget town hall, a new one that is being scheduled for March 7th. This is in addition to something that he announced last Tuesday. We wanted to make sure that it would be a town hall scheduled not during spring break, but one that would be easily accessible to all of the folks in our community. I also want to congratulate McLean High School Theater. They've won the regional one acts. They are going to the state and they are putting on one of Ed Monk's plays. And Ed Monk is our wonderful theater teacher from Chantilly. And I also want to congratulate again the people who organized the amazing rally Tuesday in support of full funding for our schools. We have a lot of work to do ahead of us as we continue to work with our members of the board of supervisors and hold our breath as best we can with the state. So, again, thank you very much. I have been attending schools, talking about the budget, and I will be continued to be visiting many of the PTAs to talk about the budget. Thank you.
Ms. Huff?
Thank you. I want to begin by recognizing publicly my children's bus driver, who was an amazing example of FCPS employee excellence. I'll preface it with saying I'm not a Valentine's Day fan. And however, this bus driver went above and beyond and showed an extreme act of kindness because my youngest son left his Valentines on the bus on Friday. And he was so upset and his bus driver realized that they were left. And after he was done with his long day and long week, came by after he finished his runs and brought them to my son and made our weekend. So, thank you to him. And I also was able to attend Mountain View High School graduation and it was amazing and congratulations to the seniors and their hard work and to the school that is putting out amazing children in our community, students, adults, I guess, at this point. And I want to echo Ms. Strauss's condolences for the Scalia family. And I do hope that our school system does a great job in supporting his children and grandchildren as they are grieving and celebrating the amazing work and love that he has provided for both his family and our country and a chance to really celebrate that. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would like to recognize Justice Scalia. Janie and I, and I think Mr. and Illyon was there last year for the McLean High School graduation where he did speak and which was probably one of his last public speeches. So, that was truly an honor to be able to hear him then. And so, he will be missed. I had the opportunity to go with Pat to the South Lakes Pyramid Wide Broadway Tunes Concert, which is by far the best pyramid-wide concert I have ever seen in Fairfax County Public Schools. I mean, the production value was incredible. So, shout-out to them. And I also enjoyed going with my colleagues Tammy and Pat down to Richmond to the Capitol Conference where it was very clear that the efforts of VSBA were successful in stopping the charter school bill, which this school board came out with a resolution opposing at our last meeting. So, congratulations to all of you and everyone else who lobbied on behalf of defeating that legislation. Thank you.
Mr. Renickovacs?
I was going to mention the same thing, that Mr. McElveen and Ms. Hines, who attended the Virginia School Boards Association Capitol Conference. It's also always exciting to see the process in Richmond. It's a lot of sausage making. And Ms. Hines and I were able to meet with several delegates and senators from the Northern Virginia delegation. So, we were excited to do that. We thank them for their hard work and time that they spend. But we did have a little analysis prior to that and unfortunately, Virginia still has the statistic of, the unfortunate statistics of being number 10th out of 50 in wealth in the, as a state, but number 41st in K through 12 education funding. So, that was a statistic that we were hoping would improve, but it has not and we will continue to lobby and work with our state legislators to hopefully improve that as the years go by, as well as with the governor. Thank you all, to everyone who came out yesterday to ground at Coffee for my COFAX Coffee. I thank you for sharing your questions and your comments and your compliments as well. So, I will be scheduling another one in the next two months and I will put that in my newsletter when I send that out. I wanted to thank all the people who came out to the rally. I too, I was not able to attend. I too had a weather event. I was stuck in Syracuse with minus five degrees and snow and ice. And may I mention that the college and the schools were open. So, I felt like such a diva, thinking about where I would be if I wasn't, if it wasn't there. So, and also, I had the pleasure of meeting the new principal at Riverside Elementary with my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders. So, thank you for welcoming us into your school and showing us your amazing faculty and wonderful students. It was the day before Valentine's Day and everybody was really excited and, but they were so well behaved, but there was a lot of excitement because of that. So, thank you.
And I also was very happy to attend the rally, the Invest in Kids Rally, last Tuesday at the Government Center. In my 25 years in the county, I have not ever seen so much engagement around funding the schools and it's great. And the students did such a good job. It was, it was really wonderful to see. And I thought it was really very positive. It was all about what's so great about the school system and how we need to save that and we need to reinvest in it. And so, I was very proud of everybody and I hope that our work on the budget honors your work on the budget, everybody out there who's working so hard. Just one announcement, Supervisor Kathy Hudgens, Supervisor for Hunter Mill, is holding her annual Hunter Mill Huddle on Saturday morning. I know. It is cute. Vienna Fire Department at 8:30 in the morning, Saturday morning. And there will be a focus on the budget. I want to thank Kristin Michael for being there on Saturday morning to help me explain the FCPS budget. And I hope that a lot of folks from the community will come out and listen and talk and be heard. So, all right, I would love to say that we're adjourning, but we are not adjourning yet. We have to finish our closed meeting, which we started earlier. So, I will make a motion to convene, to reconvene closed meeting. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider the employment assignment and performance of specific public employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Evans, seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. That's unanimous.